This is our community's house. We are all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Little, Mayor for the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to the second night of our public hearing on the 1200 block of East Keith Road. Again, this is a quasi judicial setting. I do have a bit of a script I need to go through. It's going to be less than a few minutes here. And then we'll start and then we'll go immediately into public input. So we will not be starting with the staff presentation again at this time. It's going to go straight into first time speakers that we had identified. Starting with the people who had signed up to speak but were passed by because they weren't in the meeting. Yesterday at that time, we're going to just exhaust, go back through that list, see if they've joined us for today. And if not, then we're going to continue on with the first person speakers or the first speakers. First time speakers, how about that? This public hearing is being reconvened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid format, meaning there is a combination of in person and electronic participation by some or all members of the council staff and the public. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. We will continue with the established speakers list. At the end of the speaking of speakers list, the chair may call for any additional speakers not on the speakers list. You have five minutes to address counsel for a first time. Begin your remarks to counsel by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaw under consideration this evening. If you have provided a written submission, there's no need to read it as it will have already been seen by counsel. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaw under consideration at this hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Counsel wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Counsel is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Counsel may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaw which counsel has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available at the table next to the door. And online at dmv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a third night. At the conclusion of the public input, counsel may request further information from staff which may or may not require an extension of the hearing. Or counsel may close the hearing, after which counsel should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So again, the order of events, I have the speakers list with the past speakers from yesterday. We have a number of other people who have added their names throughout the course of the day today. And so that's what's represented on the on the list up here. And then when I get to the end of that, don't worry, if you haven't had a chance to speak yet, I'll come back to the room and to the virtual participants and we'll get people to raise their hands and we'll add them to the list and progress until everybody's had an opportunity to speak. Once everybody's had a chance to speak a first time, then we're going to take a little short break and we're going to throughout this process, counsel has been allowed to send in some clarifying questions about the presentations. And so at that time, we're going to have staff respond to those clarifying questions. And then we'll return back to the public again, this time for first and second time speakers to come up and make their second time speeches. So that's the plan for the evening. And once we've exhausted all of the speakers who want to speak, then at that time, we'll proceed with closing the hearing potentially, as was said in in the intro. I just want to double check with the clerk. The bylaw was already properly introduced at the beginning of last meeting. Is there anything else you need to address?
Through the chair, no, there is not.
Okay, so we can go straight into public and hearing speakers. And so the first speaker that I have on the list again was passed yesterday. This is Marty Blundell. Is Marty Blundell here? Or virtually. And if you see your name in the first group of speakers there and you're one of the virtual participants, get your name to match them and 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 that'll be easier for us to find you and bring you over to the main meeting. The next speaker I have is Kevin Hollitt. Okay, Victor Bedrosian. Welcome, come on up. We'll have you come to the to the seat in middle here.
Hey, hello. I live nearby at Carton. And I heard about this news that's everybody is worried about and so am I. Mainly I'm worried about the value of my property because that's my that's my life, you know, and if I if I lose money, then I can buy something else later on. So that's the value can might come down. I don't I don't really agree that it says yesterday that the value will not come down because people will see that there is a homeless shelter there and and we know that, I mean, we can be hypocrite. We know how it is the homeless situation. It is bad. I don't think anybody should be homeless in Canada, first of all. I think this Canada is a rich country. And everybody should have a home. This is a, this is very bad. And it is a good thing that Prime Minister Abbey is doing to to help people, but not in our neighborhood, not in not in areas where people are not used to that kind, that kind of people. I mean, there's different kinds of categories of people. You can make a slum in the middle of of the place that there are people living there and change it into a different kind of category. People are have to continue with their lives. They have their safety is important. And their well being and they they put them in a stressful situation that they have to sell. All of a sudden, I think some kind of alternative should be that a kind of housing which people who cannot afford, like people are in a difficult situation. They can that kind of place, you know, for people like that, maybe with one bedroom, not instead of a studio, one bedroom with a knife and people. There is a lot of places like that, or they can put a restaurant there or something like that. But it's, I have to agree, I'm worried that the main thing is people, people. I mean, it can be, it can be affecting our life, life, what do you call it? Our livelihood.
Quality of life.
And, you know, so my wife is worried and other people are in the building, they are worried about it and and I prefer that we we put this in another location which is which is more suitable. And there's a lot of place like, like another thing is if it's if it's not affordable to live in Vancouver, they can move to another province. And people who are in welfare, they cannot live in Vancouver. Yes, I cannot. And but if you live in another province, like Montreal or so, the where the where the rents are low, they can still live in an apartment and they can be away from this drug problem that they have here. And this is another option, I would say, or anywhere else in Canada. There's a lot of place in Canada. This is one of the biggest countries in the world. And and it's only Vancouver which is very expensive. And why don't they move to another place and another city? I moved myself when I was when I was thirty, I moved from Montreal to here. And if you have to, you go ahead and move. That's that's what I will say, but this will affect, but this I won't want to leave very long when I made my point and they can put something there in that area. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Victor Bedrosian. Yeah. Oh, sorry, folks. The next speaker I have is virtual speaker Dorsa, but I actually don't see that name on the panel list here. Just checking in with clerks. Do you have? Okay, so we'll again mark them as not here. Which, sorry. Right, but if their name doesn't match, then they're not, that's they're not in that order. So we can add them to the end of the list. That's fine. The next speaker I have is Irene Engel. Is Irene Engel here?
Hi, I'm here. I'm just needing to figure out how to share my screen. Can you all see my slides?
Yes, I can. Although if it was full screened, like if you start the slideshow, it it might be easier to see. That's better. Thank you. Yes, welcome. I can hear you and see your screens and you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, councillors and Mayor Mike Little for giving me the opportunity to speak regarding 1200 Keith Road. I wanted to share some slides and end with some feedback. The first slide is of my daughter Eden. She is almost four years old. Sorry, I don't, I wasn't planning on being emotional. She loves singing to Kelly Clarkson, idolizes her big brother and says two things are her favorite in the whole world. Her babies that are her stuffed toys and Bridgman Park. When I was diagnosed with breast cancer in twenty twenty one, we had to be very mindful of my immunosuppression and COVID. This meant many outings to Bridgman Park. The park is really a sanctuary for my family and one that I feel safe having my kids roam around somewhat independently because of how family oriented it is. Your proposal will introduce a non-family oriented supportive housing three hundred meters away from a park that many in the community, albeit not all of them are District of North Vancouver constituents, go to on a frequent basis. How are we to feel safe knowing criminal record checks are not part of the selection process for this housing? Councillor Catherine Pope, you retweet the North Shore News. I thought I would also include snippets of the North Shore News that I found simply Googling mountain highway overpass. The elephant in the room is the proximity this proposal is to arguably the busiest crosswalk and highway overpass in North Vancouver. I am a nurse by background and many years ago had the pleasure of completing my final nursing preceptorship at a facility dedicated to women living with mental health and substance use issues. My night shifts were spent mainly being ears for women who have lived experience. I do not wish upon anyone in this room and who suffered with insomnia. I am unsure how building a mixed gender supportive housing building with no ability to house multiple family members safely is deemed trauma informed. I also do not understand how it is trauma informed to place people who have may have altered levels of consciousness right in front of a highway that could potentially cause them harm. One of the articles you can see notes the noise from the highway and how it impacts taxpaying constituents of yours. Another article notes an impact an individual suffering with mental health had on Highway One. It says a standstill occurred. You are proposing to place individuals with very real mental health issues right on a highway. One speaker yesterday also noted that we have many homes embedded in our community with individuals living with mental health issues and that they are not aware of them. Actually, I am very aware of the house on my street that has men living with mental health issues, where there's an ambulance multiple times a month. I am aware because it made me have to time when I went for a walk with my daughter during Matley and they tend to pace the neighborhood. And not every day is understandably a stable one for them. From a healthcare perspective, we follow the co-sailers teachings of good medicine. I am unclear if the voice of those utilizing this potential building has been included. Will women feel safe? Is it good medicine to place people near a busy highway? Is it good medicine to move folks out of their communities as I am unsure about the homeless situation in Sealand? I do know that the council's neighborhoods will not be impacted. Upper Lynn, Lynn Valley, Deep Cove, Parkgate, Seymour and Pemberton Heights will not be impacted. This proposal is right at the border of the district, which makes me curious if the population density of constituents impacts your decision of where to build. On a similar topic, I'd like to provide some feedback. I am, as the nurses that report to me say, a young millennial. None of you on the council represent my age demographic. None of the Housing Society members that presented represent my demographic. None of you have likely had to purchase your first home during a pandemic. I know I am making a large generalization and I do apologize for that. This is my first council meeting I have ever attended in my life, which I think should speak volumes to you about this issue, given that I have two small children, a disease that even today I had to get an infusion for and a full time job in the city in healthcare, helping those you seek to house. I find this whole process alarmingly undemocratic. Yesterday, a speaker said they were invited by a council member to come speak for this proposal. I wonder why you did not invite me personally, a taxpaying mother of two children that lives in the neighborhood, to come speak. Photos of another individual that is for this proposal was taken and quickly placed on Twitter. Where are the taxpayers' photos on your Twitter supporting our voice? Additionally, I am unaware that there were eighty five plus individuals that were unable to join online information sessions. I agree that this initiative needs a strong restart. As you can see, I am home because I found that there was a great disparity between those that were executive directors and even MLA's home able to eloquently speak to a topic that is literally their job. I decided perhaps I would seem more professional too if I stayed at home. It makes taxpayers and people that, as you heard yesterday, work and live in this community sound, I'm almost done, sound less prepared and less eloquent to speak to this topic when you have professionals in housing speak at public hearings. I was also given less than twenty four hours notice to prepare my points. This is evidenced by my slides that I had to make today in haste between my appointments at Lions Gate. There is misrepresentation here of the public and certainly what has not been emphasized is the sheer volume of individuals that have signed against this proposal. I feel like you are pushing an agenda that I am unsure who will really benefit. From a healthcare perspective, you are placing vulnerable individuals in an unsafe location. From a taxpayer's perspective, it feels like last night was calculated to make taxpayers look less put together than individuals that get paid to speak on housing. Again, a large number of you do not live in this area. How is it ethical for you to make decisions for a neighborhood that has overwhelmingly told you and signed how they are against this proposal? Does the safety of Eden or vulnerable people matter to you more than your agenda? Thank you.
May I get you to, oh, thank you so much. Appreciate that. We we had the discussion last night. I guess we'll have it again. The applause cheering, jeering is not welcome in here. It's intimidating to people who may show may have different views. It's it's not welcome in this room. This council is committed to making this a bullying and harassment free space. The next speaker I have is Rua, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Hello, I am a resident living near the site of the proposed housing project on East Keith Street, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My message today, while also directed to the representatives who sit before me, is more so directed to the constituents who sit behind me and those watching online. I hear you when you say you worry about having those who have been unhoused in your community. When you say you worry about hard drug use being in your community. When you worry about buildup of trash in your community. When you worry about people with mental health issues being in your community. However, and I'm sorry if this bursts anyone's bubble, these issues are already here. I've spent a lot of time in some of the specific areas you are concerned about for a number of years, especially the last few. I can tell you without a doubt, the things you worry about this project bringing into the community are already here. There are struggling people, fellow human beings already in this community, despite a lack of a solid roof over their heads. I've seen people who are living along the roads in their vehicles, living in their campers, the people living in the forest in tents and under tarps. They are already here. They are at Sunrise Park, which extends to the opposite corner from this housing project. They are along Ling Creek at Bridgman at Inter River. They are already your neighbors. I have found needles on the grounds of Cloverley School Site. I have found needles and seen hard drug use adjacent to the soccer field at Sunrise Park, where dozens of children are coached. We live in a community which is lacking supervised injection sites and needle exchanges, which means inevitably that unhoused people taking drugs intravenously and their needles end up on our public lands. I've found drug paraphernalia from Moodyville Park to Bridgman to Inter River. I've picked up trash upon trash upon trash. These issues are already here. I implore you, please, take off your rose colored glasses and see that what you are so afraid of is already present. Regardless of this proposed housing project, and yet it seems many of you have not really realized it. If you are worried about drug use in your community, please consider that it is already happening. And that people experienced using issues with drug abuse would generally prefer a private space to use away from you, away from your families. Denying that does not make it go away, but rather further drives it into public spaces. If you are worried about property crime, please consider that being incarcerated is much less of a deterrent when it means you will receive amenities you do not already have, such as being consistently fed and having a dry, secure place to sleep. Consider that I, as a small and relatively privileged individual, after more than a decade in this area, growing up here, walking through our parks both in the day and the dead of night, I have never once experienced violence, threats, intimidation or harassment from the people you are so afraid of who are already here. While this is not a unanimous experience, the alternative experiences are the exception, not the rule. Living in any urban or suburban community, any community where your nearest neighbors are not dozens, if not hundreds of meters away, simply means you will almost certainly be in close proximity to people who are experiencing addiction, in close proximity to people experiencing mental health issues, in close proximity to people who for many reasons find themselves without stable housing situations and without housing in general, whether you see it or not. You may not want to acknowledge it and you may not find it pretty, but it is the reality. The only ways this can be mitigated are either to provide support for those who are struggling or to employ authoritarian inhumane solutions which push those who are struggling, who could one day include your acquaintances, your friends, even your family further to the margins of society. Make your decisions carefully as history, as always, is watching and judging us. I was taught from a young age, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Rua. Next speaker I have is Claudia Cornwall. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay. My name is Claudia Cornwall and I have lived in North Vancouver for almost forty years. You can see that I really appreciate the value of having a stable home. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. I'm in favor of the supportive housing project on East Keith Road. Homeless people live all across the lower mainland, not just on the downtown east side. We have homeless people and people at risk of homelessness on the North Shore. Over the years, the profile of homeless people has changed. For example, the North Shore News had a story in which they reported that twenty percent of the people who are homeless on the North Shore do work. I think the best way to alleviate homelessness is to provide people with homes, not to move them around, as the previous speaker was alluding to. Not only is it the moral and ethical thing to do, it is also beneficial from an economic viewpoint. People with homes are much more likely to be able to work successfully and to deal with mental and physical health issues. In the lower mainland, the cost of the tax to the taxpayer of homelessness is estimated to be about two hundred million a year, or about fifty five thousand per homeless person. So I have one last thought to leave you with. We're approaching Christmas. And this is the day when we celebrate the arrival of a baby who was born in a stable. Homelessness is not a crime and it happens to the best of us. Let us be leaders and provide a model for other communities in B C to follow. Let's move forward with a supportive housing project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Claudia Cornwall. The next speaker I have is Michelle Sheardown, followed by Rebecca Lance. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Sheardown and I'm a resident of Lynn Valley. Thank you, Mayor Little and councillors, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I wrote a letter in support of the rezoning and then came last night to listen to the speakers. And what I heard left me feeling quite unwell and and also confused. Were speakers actually using the words drug addict and homeless or at risk of homelessness interchangeably? And so when I got home, I am still trying to make sense of the evening and wondering why it had been so upsetting. And I reflected on my childhood, living in poverty with my single mom and realized that the summer we went camping, we were probably homeless. So it is therefore for these two reasons I feel compelled to speak today. One, being homeless is not synonymous with being a criminal, having a mental illness or being a drug addict. Two, homelessness could happen to my child or yours or a brave seventy six year old woman who has fallen through the cracks or to any member of our community. The District of North Vancouver's official community plan lists social equity as the lens intended to guide the district's decision making. This feels right. It makes sense. It's the golden rule, really. We heard it a minute ago. A community I would be proud to call home. One that looks out for its weakest members, helps people get on their feet when the going gets rough. How have we come to live in a place of such wealth and privilege, yet at the same time be a community unwilling to care for its own? Do we have to look as far as the U N Universal Declaration of Human Rights to find a right to housing? Surely we have that right here in the District of North Vancouver. Or do we? Unfortunately, I think the answer is that only some of us are granted that right, seemingly by the luck of the draw, which doesn't seem very universal. As was stated in a recent North Shore News article, the homeless count numbers illustrate the need for a dramatic increase in affordable housing and poverty reduction measures, with thirty five percent of people providing not enough income as their reason for housing loss. So you or a loved one are let go from work unexpectedly. And even without a job or even with a job, may have nowhere to go. The need for this type of housing clearly outweighs what's being built and underscores the importance of keeping lower lowering the barriers to building new developments such as this supportive housing on East Keith Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Michelle Sheardown. The next speaker I have, I believe, joining us virtually is Rebecca Lance, followed by Sarah Katemi. You have that. There we go.
Bye, everybody. Sorry, I'm just balancing this between a toddler beside me, but hi, everyone. So in regards to the proposed supportive housing unit on East Keith, I would like to state that I'm in favor of the development for a number of reasons. You know, while I respect members of the community for their concerns and input regarding the population this development is geared to serve, I am extremely disheartened by the lack of compassion, insight and quite frankly, education of the already established low barrier sites as well as the vulnerable population as a whole. I've worked in North Van for the last four years as a social support for individuals entrenched in homelessness and addictions, many of whom are born and raised in the North Shore. Some of whom were teachers in North Vancouver, others who maybe went to school with you or your parents, seniors who have lived here their entire life within the District of North Vancouver. These are people who have children. These are people who have families. And most importantly, they have a purpose in our community. I'm a mother of a one year old boy and his safety is the most important thing to me. Developing affordable housing does not impede on my son's safety. Raising my son in a community that doesn't believe everyone is entitled to a roof over their head concerns me far greater than a pipe laying in the street. Many of the concerns spoken to regarding this development are far greater than what housing alone can solve. North Vancouver does not want to establish a site for individuals to use drugs safely. There have been numerous petitions to shut down the North Shore Shelter. The support for mental health and addictions in North Vancouver is decades behind. North Vancouver has no detox facility. The waitlist for treatment beds in the lower mainland alone is months long. Addiction and homelessness doesn't happen overnight and it won't be solved overnight, but making steps in the right direction is a start. I guarantee that most, if not all, of the people at this hearing tonight are not concerned where they're going to sleep tonight or where your next meal is going to come from. Yet we are all given the power to decide whether or not somebody else has to worry about that. I have watched this community pretend like homelessness doesn't exist, creating more barriers for people who face nothing but barriers on a day to day basis. I have experienced time and time again, send them back down to the downtown east side. And while ignorance is bliss, it all is also the reason our neighbors, our friends, our children and members of our community are dying. I have personally been in recovery from opiate use for seven years now. I am a functioning member of society and an active participant in my community. I was only able to get here because I was given the opportunity to have my basic needs met, including a roof over my head. So for anyone who is opposed to this development, I certainly hope that your children, your friends and your family never experience addiction or homelessness. Because I am certain if someone you love was sleeping under the walkway in the middle of the Spirit Trail in December, you would want your community to be advocating for a safe place for them to live. My hope is that the community of North Vancouver is able to use this opportunity as a platform to move away from its longstanding reputation of being an exclusive society and start to give a hand up to those that need it most. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments, Rebecca Lance. The next speaker I have is Sarah Katemi, followed by Jerry Ribling. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, councillor. My name is Sarah Katemi or Malakpor. I think that my name is there like twice, so. Yeah, number forty-five and forty-seven.
Thank you.
It is crucial to offer homes to homeless and vulnerable individuals. Equally important is taking steps that do not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood and its residents. While I support the general concept of constructing houses for vulnerable people, I strongly oppose this specific project. There are several reasons. Many individuals have already discussed potential concerns related to safety and property values, which are indeed crucial points that align with my concerns as well. However, there are other important aspects that haven't been adequately addressed. All individuals, regardless of their background, are combined and the sole commonality among them is the lack of home. This situation can give rise to various issues such as concerns about safety for themselves and for their residents in the neighborhood. Professionals may hesitate to reside in such a neighborhood, leading to gradual decline in the local population. As a mother, I'm concerned about my son's future. We all recognize that children often learn more from their peers than their parents, emphasizing the importance of the environment in which your child grows up. A brighter future is shaped when friends come from successful backgrounds. The inability to enroll my son in Edgemont, West Vancouver, or UBC implies that the government is determining determining who my son's classmates and friends will be influencing his future choices, because that's my catchment. If I knew such development will be built, I would never choose to buy property in this neighborhood. In my view, screening is essential and not discrimination. It offers an accurate prescription because people are there to seek help. So we are providing them with help when we know what their needs is. When visiting a doctor, screening is necessary for the best recovery prescription. Mixing people may not contribute to recovery and could lead to irreversible consequences. Simply, a single person with one problem can enter the facility and quickly find themselves dealing with multiple issues instead of one. Example, a criminal with a history of sexual harassment, for instance, may abuse someone in the facility that is there only because of financial issues and not anything else. A single instance of sexual abuse has a potential to result in mental health issues, depression, and more. This could be place the vulnerable person under overwhelming stress, potentially leading them to use drugs or alcohol to cope, turning a single problem into multiple challenges. Those with mental health challenges should be kept in facilities that promote recovery, providing them with a path back to normal life. A facility that ensures safety for all and facilitates a swift return to normal life and move to affordable homes once they are ready. The location could be suitable for affordable homes, but not for individuals with behavioral issues. Drug use situated in a high-speed area already impacted by heavy traffic. Imagine individuals under influence wandering in the middle of intersections. When discussing homeless individuals from North Vancouver, how is their catchment area is determined? If they have an address, they are not homeless. If they don't, it appears that anyone from any area, whether Burnaby, East Hastings, or elsewhere in Vancouver, could join this facility. We are familiar with the challenges in East Hastings area. If this project could bring about significant positive change, why not extend similar facilities through B.C. Housing and Vancouver Coastal Health to transform East Hastings into a model neighborhood? I'm confident that witnessing positive changes in the East Hastings area would garner widespread support for such projects throughout the whole province. I question the significance of public input in the process. If it's deemed important, there are notable issues. Firstly, information about this project has not been widely available, being publicly disclosed only in the past two months, despite planning for several years. The signs are placed in high-speed areas rather than trails or parks. I question why people had to register to attend, why the virtual session had to be limited to thirty people, and why the B.C. housing website does not include a hearing as part of the key date for the project. You can check it now. This raises concerns that not all perspectives are being considered. It appears as though there is a facade of seeking public input while decisions have already been made. If public input is genuinely valued, why the rush to make a decision within two months? The proper approach, in my opinion, is to ensure widespread information dissemination and allow people in the neighborhood the opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Sarah Katemi. The next speaker I have is Jerry Ribling and I know we were trying to connect. I can see you on the virtual call and you should be seeing a box pop up in your screen that says promote to panel. We need you to accept that or else we won't be able to get you. We won't be able to make it so that the room can hear you. I need you to accept that notification that you would have received. Okay, if we're having some technical difficulties reaching Jerry, we're going to continue on with the list and we'll circle back and check back in at a later time. The next speaker I have is. Yeah, declined to be promoted. Okay, so if you're going to decline, that's fine. We'll move on to the next speaker. The next speaker I have is Ally Hummel. And then following Ally Hummel is Elaine Dow. Thumb drag? Yeah.
I'll show it in a minute.
Did it pop up right away?
I'll show it. Thank you. Oh, there you go.
Tech support a long time ago. If you have Windows ninety-five questions, I'm your guy.
I feel you sadly. Mayor Little, municipal council members. My husband and I moved into the area to raise our family because, oh, I gotta get control of my hormonal emotions. My husband and I moved into the area to raise our family because it was what we could afford. And we believed in the master community plan that both the District of North Vancouver and Denahomes were building. I'm extremely grateful to the D.N.B., Denahomes, and the surrounding local developers that saw the vision for what Lynn Creek could be for young families and for the work that has been done to date to this park, upgrading the parks and the infrastructure that's being built that will help support these young families. We are raising children in a very different time than how many of us grew up and all of the families that are showing up in here, up here in opposition to this project are doing so from a place of duty for our children. I have attended every virtual session, every in-person meeting, and done my best to keep an open mind throughout the process, trusting that the elected council surely must be doing the same and focusing on what is best for my family and my local Lynn Creek community. It has been a devastating experience to feel that none of my concerns have been addressed and the suggestions that have been brought up, and there have been many, to date, that date back to the initial virtual session back in October, which is over a month ago, have not been researched or reported on. It feels extremely frustrating to feel that my concerns and those of many others that have opposed this project are not being addressed or answered. The presentation that was shown yesterday quoted a crime study that was a decade out of date and images of unrelated projects in other locations that cause misleading understanding of what is being proposed here. This calls the legitimacy of the proponents' arguments into question. We have heard arguments in favor of this project from two groups predominantly. Invited people here from outside the Lynn Creek community and a number of men who live in a gated concierge serviced F pub security luxury condo tower. Neither of these groups will be affected by the challenges that are being highlighted by the overwhelming majority of the constituents voicing opposition to this project as currently conceived. I'm here today giving a voice to the children of this community. The seven daycares within close proximity to this proposed project utilize the beautiful Lynn Creek Trails and Bridgeman Park on a daily basis year-round. I am there multiple times a day in that place. I haven't walked through it once in a while. I'm there every day. On the weekends, families fled to Bridgeman Park. It has become an essential safe play space for our community. I want to remind you that you have an obligation to protect and serve these children. Children that don't have a voice yet to express themselves and can't articulate their fears. Here are photos of the locals, one of the local daycares, one of the seven in the Lynn Creek community, where the children are brought every day to freely play and explore the Lynn Creek Trails and Parks. They jump in piles of leaves, they find hidden treasures. They play with rocks, they play with sticks in the trees, and they explore hidden areas. You are responsible for these children and their safety in these community spaces. You owe a duty of care to all of your constituents, including the voiceless, defenseless children shown here. You are their voice too. Look at the overwhelming opposition. Actually, I want to scroll through these quickly. Every day, these children go out, every day, rain or shine, and they play in this park. Look at the overwhelming opposition being expressed by your constituents, the people your job it is to serve. I appreciate that you are in a difficult situation with the provincial government that is trying to force a project on you that that the residents you serve oppose. But I want to remind you that your job is to represent the people and the District of North Vancouver, not Bowen Maw. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ally Hummel. It's not helpful. It means I have to stop and I have to talk again about the applause. We're trying to make sure this is an environment where everybody feels welcome to share their opinions and we don't want to be cheering, jeering, applauding, making people feel unwelcome. And so please don't do that. We want people to feel welcome. The next speaker I have is Elaine Dow, followed by Graham Alexander. Elaine Dow? Is Elaine joining us virtually? Okay, so we don't see a name that matches Elaine Dow on the list. And so I will circle back around and check back in in case they join the list a little bit later. Okay, right. We'll circle back and double-check that person to make sure they have an opportunity to speak. Next speaker I have is Graham Alexander, followed by Amanda Vinette Christensen. Graham Alexander is joining us virtually and he has moved over to the panel. Graham, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you see me or?
I can hear you. I can't see you, but I can hear you clearly. Welcome. When you're ready, I have five. Oh, there it goes. There you go. Yeah, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
All right. Well, first of all, I wanted to address everybody there just to give an introduction. I was there the other day, but I'm the founder of G.G.I.Q. Developments. Back in nineteen, two thousand twenty sixteen and eighteen, we purchased around fifty million dollars of properties. We did assemblies. We started with Bond Street, which I actually grew up in, on one of the streets. We did an assembly for eight million. We sold it to Norman Laub. We did Rupert Street. We sold it to an Iranian group. And finally, we did Crown to the Washington properties as well as the adjacent properties right next to this hospital. The Four Houses. You're familiar with which houses I'm talking about, right, Mayor? Council?
I don't. I mean, I'm familiar with the Pure Living Project that you mentioned, Norman Laub. I'm not certain about this.
This project is on Mountain Highway in Keith, so you know how you guys have that corner area?
Just carry on, Graham.
Okay. Here's the thing, okay? First of all, I want to thank you guys, but listen, this is what I want to say. As a real estate developer in the area who grew up in the area, I had a vision to put two towers there because I'm the founder of State Runners Worldwide. We're Bitcoin and delivery eighty countries around the world. And I started this company right here in Vancouver. And since then, I've been talking to Mayor Sim about the mobile hotel and New York City, Los Angeles. I even had lunch with Elon and we've been talking stuff, big things about the mobile hotel to solve the homeless problem. I sent everybody a presentation. What does this have to do about this? Look, as a developer, we took a risk. We bought the Four Houses. I met with you, Mayor. I want to do some short-term on ground, but we took a risk. And of course, we're going to lose big time, in my opinion, based on how you guys have approached it, okay? I would say, take the city of Vancouver's example. If you guys are going to push this through, if you guys are going to ram this thing through and you guys have already thought this through and this is what you guys want to do, solve it this way. All right, fair enough. But consider what Mayor Sim is looking to do with the mobile hotel and also with this development. All the neighbors, you got to look at Expo eighty-six, when they did all around the whole area, they did a whole development and introduced social housing, okay? So they did it with all other places and they gave everybody a bunch of good FSR. And all these poor homeowners, come on, Mayor. I mean, you guys are going to put East Hastings Street right, right there, across from Mount Highway. Come on. You're better than that. You can be the next Prime Minister. I told you I could back you up as the next Prime Minister of Canada if you make the right decisions, okay? I became an entrepreneur from nothing and I love one of your guys there. I forgot it. Black, I believe, is his name. Is that his name? He's a hell of a guy. I also like the other C.T.V. News girl. She's great. But the other guys, I love you guys too, but look, you guys got to wake up, okay? If you're going to introduce one little square building in the middle of nowhere surrounded by North Shore Winter Club, Washington Properties, who happens to be the biggest employer in British Columbia, which I own thirty percent, let's give everybody a bunch of FSR, okay? Let me build my two towers. Let me give back to the community a hundred million dollars and let's revive this city. We are behind everybody. Mayor, you barely won last time. You barely won, buddy, but you won. You texted me and I texted you. And that's the truth. Everybody loves Murray. I get that. But listen, there's an election coming up and I want you to make the right decision. And I want to say to you this, there's two ways to go to this. Halt the project for a few months and let me introduce what the mayor of New York City loves, which Mayor Sim, I'm working with the outreach program of the mobile hotel which solves the traffic issue, the homelessness issue, everything in one shot. And you're talking to the real thing, Mayor. I grew up here. You can look me up. I know I'm not known because I work behind the scenes on developments. I barely come out in public and show my face because I love my family. I got a nine-year-old girl. She's going across town. I want to be proud. I will say, I'm not from Vancouver. I'm from the District of North Vancouver under Mayor Little. That's what I want to say. And if you make the right decision tonight, say, ho, 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 ho. Let's slow this baby down a bit or you know what? Let's change the OCP, give everybody a bunch of FSR and everyone's happy, win-win. But you can't throw. And I respect homeless. I love homeless people. And I want to help and that's why I built the mobile hotel and we're meaning everybody, okay? So Mayor, slow the process down. I love you, bro. I love all these guys. You guys are great, but you got to wake up.
Thank you for your comments, Graham Alexander. The next speaker I have is Amanda Vinette Christensen, followed by James Holtrup.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I can hear you and see you. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Hey, I want to just apologize in advance. I just learned about this meeting the other day. I've been away for the week, but it's important to me that I'm here. So if my thoughts seem a bit disorganized, I apologize, but I'm just going to read a quick something I threw together. So first of all, my name is Amanda Vinette Christensen. I'm an outreach worker here on the North Shore. So that's from North Vancouver up to Squamish and inclusive of Bowen Island. I additionally have twenty years of experience in the social work field, specifically working with housing and shelter programs. And I'm also a resident of the North Shore. I reside in Lynn Valley and I'm a very active community member. Actually, I volunteer with several organizations as well. I'm passionate about supporting vulnerable members of our society through a professional. through a professional scope, but I'm even more passionate on a personal level of ensuring that all of my community members and fellow North Shore residents have access to the safe, accessible and affordable housing. Because housing is one of the most basic human rights that we should be providing to our neighbors and our fellow human beings. What we know about recent years, especially those following the pandemic, is that mental health and addiction-related issues are at an all-time high, as is the current housing crisis. I consistently hear individuals acknowledge these issues and the need to provide supportive and accessible supports, programs and housing. However, then here these sentiments followed by recommending these individuals are housed away from the community and further isolated. What we know about providing housing to those who are unhoused or precariously housed is that studies show that when the housing first model is followed, people do thrive. They are able to stabilize, decompress and move out of survival mode. Housing such as the proposed housing provides a place for individuals to not only stabilize, but also provides a space where professionals can easily meet and interact with the unhoused. This is versus when they're unhoused and therefore they are much more difficult to be located by professionals. It's much more difficult for them to connect with services and supports. Who else to provide this housing than an agency who is well-versed in supporting those with complex needs combined with a health team? Regardless of whether this project goes ahead, our unhoused community members will still remain here on the North Shore. They will continue to not be appropriately served and supported. The issues that many of these members are currently combating will continue to escalate. Just a couple of quick notes in closing. This verse, us versus them mentality is dangerous. It's inhumane and I can think of multiple historical incidents where this has served us absolutely no good. I cannot think of a single one where it's worked to our benefit. While I'm sympathetic to folks, specifically parents who are fearful of their children intermixing with unhoused folks, I can assure you that individuals with family support and high socioeconomic status are not immune to becoming unhoused or experiencing addictions. Individuals, children who are raised in homes with stable families, educated parents with high incomes in communities such as Lynn Value do experience homelessness. They do experience addictions. Your children are not immune to it and they will not be immune to it if you refuse to let them intermix with individuals who are experiencing it. These unhoused individuals are all someone's child. They all deserve to be supported just as equally as those who look and walk and talk like what we perceive to be the ideal community member to be. We keep talking about losing money and what we need to be speaking about is the fact that we are losing lives. These issues will only continue to escalate unless we are solution-focused and continuing to not address these issues will be of absolutely no assistance to anyone. Thank you for your time. Those are just a couple of my quick thoughts on the matter.
Thank you for your comments, Amanda Vinette Christensen. The next speaker I have is James Holtrup.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Clearly. Welcome. When you're ready, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much. My name is James Holtrup. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I live in Lynn Valley, just on the other side of the Highway One and Mountain Highway interchange. And I want to echo a lot of the statements so far this evening and yesterday evening as well. You know, I am very pro-housing and social housing and getting people off the streets and under a roof, absolutely. However, in the community that we live in, in Lynn Valley and, you know, Staling Village, I really can't get behind the housing, the drug and addiction geared type housing. With the drug use comes crime, whether we like it or not. I know that's not statistically sound and whatnot, but it's just a generalization. But if supportive housing is needed more than social housing, then another location further from so many families and child-centered businesses and parks should be considered. Like, have you looked at other locations is my question as well. I understand there were multiple locations looked at, but this was the one selected. I'm just curious what those reasons would have been. And if this is, if this deal is done, I'd like to ask that you look into rezoning the neighborhood so homeowners are able to establish their property values and not be trapped or forced to sell and have to relocate off the shore, which is their home as well. Where all district residents is there. So you want your constituents to move from Nimby to Yimby. This housing project needs to be social housing and affordable rental, something that people have been asking for for a long time. Let's get some more roofs over people's heads. I'm curious as well, how many of the people who are supporting this project actually live close to the site? It seems many of, many of the supporters of this project do not live close to the site. Has there been any consultations with the neighboring residents by the Travelodge location? My in-laws live very close and have since rerouted their daily walks to avoid that area as it feels unsafe to them. I stand behind everything that that third speaker, I believe her name was Irene, had said, I wish I was as eloquent as she was. It was fantastic to hear her speak and make the points I think we all are thinking. But that would be all I'd like to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, James Holtrup. So we've gone through the speakers that we have so far. So I'm going to be looking for hands. Probably going to alternate back and forth between virtual participants and people in the room here. So third row, just on the aisle there, I think I saw your hand. If you'd want to come up. Yep, that's you. Yep, come on up. If you could start with your name, that would be appreciated.
Sure, thank you. A K G O L K A R.
Welcome Babak. The next speaker will be ZJ after you, joining us virtually. So, but Babak, when you're ready, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear Honorable Mayor and Council Members, my name is Babak Golkar. First and foremost, a parent to two young children and a resident of Compass Building in Sealian Village. Mind you, I am feeling like it's irrelevant tonight where I live. I could be in Calgary. And I'm here to express my strong opposition to this proposed permanent supportive housing project in our neighborhood. As someone deeply invested in both the artistic, I'm an artist by practice and local community, I feel compelled to voice my concerns regarding the gross lack of thorough research and due diligence in the planning of this project. My experience is as someone who's traveled globally for work and in particular having my art studio located right next to a shelter on two six one Central Street off of Main and Terminal, right next to a shelter, I think I mentioned that, have made me keenly aware of the challenges neighborhoods face when addressing homelessness and substance use issues. I can testify to how difficult it is to be a neighbor who witnesses overdoses, mental breakdowns and violence on a daily basis. I have to limit my time at the studio just to make sure that I'm safe to get into, you know, a vehicle and leave. While I attended the public information session hoping to gather insight into the project's merits, I instead left feeling used as provider of missing information and frankly, disheartened and disappointed. The session seemed more focused on political aspects than addressing genuine community concerns. From my perspective, several key issues need urgent attention. One, lack of comprehensive research. The proposal appears to grossly lack essential research and community consultation. Comparative cases should be studied properly, not just as propaganda in the pamphlet from various angles beyond the political lens. Number two, safety and supervision concerns. Placing sixty-five vulnerable individuals with substance use challenges, providing a private injection site or room without adequate supervision, as it was the information given to me by representative of Lumma, raise serious safety concerns reminiscent of past problematic projects like the Travelodge Initiative, where to date, seven homeless individuals came to the facility and left in coffins. Incoherence. Number three, incoherence among stakeholders. The lack of coherency among stakeholders, including B C Housing, Vancouver Coastal Health and Lumina Native Housing Society, which I should remind you as a corporation, is troubling. Each entity's history and political nuances need careful consideration to maximize the success of such project. Number four, proximity to childcare facilities. The proposed site's proximity, as was mentioned earlier, to numerous childcare facilities and public parks is a significant concern as the safety and well-being of our children must be paramount. Number five, hasty decision-making. The public information session highlighted the rushed nature of decision-making with no consideration for alternative sites. My understanding is that this was the only site that was proposed and selected without any due diligence or look at other sites. This approach undermines the careful weighing of pros and cons necessary for such an impactful project. In these challenging times, as you can all testify to, where families work tirelessly to provide for their loved ones, the security of our children is the utmost important, is of utmost importance. Approving this project without due diligence and proper city planning not only disregards our concerns as taxpayers and citizens of this neighborhood, but also undermines the trust we place in the system to represent our interests as taxpaying citizens. If this get it done, deal with the consequences later of a project gets the approval of this council, I can assure you that this will become the legacy of this council and the mayor, not as a positive initiative, but as a complete failure. I urge the council to vote against this project and take the time to explore alternative sites that ensures safety, security and well-being of everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Babak Holkar. The next speaker I have is virtual participant ZJ. ZJ, can you hear me?
Sorry, I'm coming off mute. Sorry about that. Can you hear me, Mayor Little?
I can, I can hear you and see you. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, my name is Zaheer Jawani and I live in the Lynn Creek area. I appreciate that the district has had many consultations. Mayor Little, I appreciate it. It was my first time meeting you. It was when we were at the Holiday Inn that you spoke with everyone and you spoke very clearly and candidly. So do want to acknowledge that. I'm going to talk about some of my concerns specifically around safety, but before I do, I want to comment that some of the earlier speakers spoke very generally about homelessness in our community. And what struck me is that they weren't speaking specifically to what's in front of council, which is a very specific subtopic around substance recovery and housing related to that. And I feel that it falsely kind of shows, okay, there's community support. But what the community support, especially earlier, was a lot of it was very general around housing the homeless. And I don't, I think that's a very different topic. Then that's naturally something we have to address, right? I also understand clearly the need to support homelessness. It's in our community. I see it every day. And housing insecurity and also substance abuse rehabilitation. People don't choose to be in the situation they're in and it's often through circumstance and a lot of trauma. So I want to be really clear. That being said, I feel that there are significant flaws in the process, especially related to security. I and others spoke to the senior planner. I cannot remember her name offhand. She's actually here because I saw her at the beginning of the presentation when we met. We gave our names. We requested further information regarding the plan and how the RCMP have been consulted and what's the overall security plan. And we never heard back. And Mayor Little, I asked you those same questions and they weren't really responded to with all due respect. I think it's a valid concern around safety. Other residents have talked about it because of the daycares, et cetera. I won't, I won't kind of re-raise that. There, this is relevant. There are significant issues at other sites like the one on Marine Drive as well as in Vancouver. And what I would say then, to be really clear, is your plan and the plan that I saw in the information sessions is highly contingent on a very specific planning path. Resident selection, a small amount of onsite security help, you know, help. And then there was a lot of ideological rehabilitation approaches. If those work, great, right? And people get better and that's, that's great. But you have not at all planned for the downside risk if you're wrong. And the case examples on the North Shore today at the Marine Drive site in Vancouver, et cetera, they show that you have a very significant risk of being wrong. And my concern is that everything depends on a happy path, that planning and methodologies go right and there's a planning approach here and you haven't taken a downside risk approach. And you have a high percentage chance of those downside risks materializing. And so my comment therefore is on a process point of view. I don't know how you can even be hearing this now when you have a significant gap and flaw in your process because you do not have a robust plan around safety. You do not have robust documented consultation with the RCMP and you have not clearly articulated if this planning process and all your screening and all of these things, again, if they go well, that's great. But if they do not go well, you have no downside risk in planning here. And that's really clear. And I think it's flawed for you to be putting something forth for approval when that risk is high and that risk is not accounted for. It's exceptionally poor governance. It's exceptionally poor governance. This would not pass in most governments. It would not pass in a corporation and most boards would be fired for having no downside risk planning when you have such an exceptional high risk to the community and you have exceptional high risk to children. So what I'm not saying is, okay, I'm not saying don't put it through, but you cannot put it through at this time because you have not done your due diligence. And when this was raised to your most senior city planner at those meetings who took our names down and I raised it to you, I got no answer and I got no follow-up and no one else did. That tells me you're not either taking it seriously or you don't have an answer. And I think you need to either pause this process or go back into that and have a sufficient plan there because your gap is significant. It's a governance issue. It's a confidence issue and it's a significant risk issue. And it is a valid risk, especially to children and safety in the community. If you can account for that and you can show it to us, that's fine, but you need to be able to do that and that's a gap here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Looking for a couple more people in the room here. I've got, no, you're a second time speaker, not second time speakers yet, still first time speakers. Yes, and, okay, and then we'll go to another virtual speaker, Lorraine, after will be the next person joining us.
I'm going to make mine as short as possible. I got the last window of this meeting.
I'm going to have to ask you to start with your name.
My name is Stephen Sugram. And I was born and raised in North Vancouver. I actually sold a whole bunch of units in that area. And I, I feel like some of the purchasers are being ripped off, not just from an investment perspective, but from a safety and security perspective as well. None of this was, nothing like this was initially proposed or mentioned in the OCP. I think there's a huge polarization between people thinking that everyone has like a lack of compassion for some of these underprivileged individuals. It's not that. It's, 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 I think there could just be, the job can just be done way better in terms of choosing a location for this type of thing. I have, we all have, if you've been to downtown recently, you can just see the nightmare that has happened down there. I've had a lot of listings down there that, you know, pose a lot of problems, values have plummeted for this exact kind of thing happening. And one of the speakers earlier, I think it was Mrs. Engel, one of the things that I can second and reiterate that she said is the proximity close to the highway is horrible. I, I have, I am not unfamiliar with drug addiction and abuse. I've lost close friends and family to it. So I do have the compassion there, but I just think to go and say, oh, here, look, here's seven daycares and a park and a freshwater creek. Boom, perfect location. That's a horrible location. One of my friends, you still live by a highway under, in a similar location and the highway provided easier access to drug dealers for him to get his substances from. And one day he came out and was under the influence. He got hit by a car and he is now dead. So I could, I could second the concern around the previous speaker's concern about, you know, the placement of this, of this, of this project. It just doesn't make any sense. I think you guys can do a much better job. I think you're lacking a huge due diligence here and it's a shame if it goes through. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments, Stephen. The next speaker I have is virtual speaker Lorraine.
Lorraine, can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, hi.
Okay, hi. I'm gonna speak of a parent whose child has been in recovery for twenty seven years. It is a roller coaster. When you're dealing with addicts, there's no simple. If District of North Van really wants to make an impact on these homeless of the people that are drug related detox and recovering, long term recovery centers. Having a shelter where they can come and use, bring their friends in does not help. I spoke to my son on this issue last night and he was appalled. We are close to the facility. He is clean. He's he's a business owner. And he just could not believe that you'd bring this into this area. For some addicts, addicts fight it with their brain continuously. I'm all for having homeless people to affordability and seniors and mental illness. I am not for addicts. I've lived it. I've been on a roller coaster. My, my son, when I detoxed him, I went through Vancouver Coast Health. We had him in the hall. We detoxed him. He stole from us. He would sleep during the day because he was high. Then he would go out at nighttime and he would steal from people. You don't understand, having addicts in the area, they will, they go searching at night and they steal. I fought this and I fought this and I fought this. Thank God he is now clean on his own. The best place for for people that are addicts is in recovery center. If you want to do something like that, out by the new rescue center, there's lots of force. You could do a detox center and you could do recovery center. The last door is one of the best recovering centers and they could really give you good advice. How to get people clean and how to keep them clean. I do not believe addicts in this area and letting them come and have a safe place to shoot up. It's wrong. It's just so wrong. You have to live in it and be in it to know what it's like. Seniors, we need, we need affordable seniors. We need homeless people to have shelter. I'm totally for that. I don't have a problem with it. I do have a problem with addicts. And I'd like to know why City of North Van is not involved into this since you're so close. And what about the school districts? Are they aware of this kind of facility coming to our location? Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Lorraine. Was there someone else in the room here? First time speaker? First time speaker? Okay, I'm gonna go back to virtual again. I've got John Miller as a first time speaker, uh, joining us virtually.
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me? And then I believe we have a person named Sam after John Miller also, if we can move them over as a panelist. John, I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As I mentioned, my name is John Miller, lived in the District of North Van for approximately the past five years. And similar to some early speakers, I am a millennial. Unfortunately, I'm not friends with Elon Musk or Ken Sim, but I am a young and proud North Vancouverite nonetheless. Uh, I do have two young children, four and two. One of them does attend Park Place daycare right across the street from the proposed site. My daughter often attends Bridgman Park with her daycare in the afternoon. I'm pretty sure my daughter is actually in one of the photos that was presented earlier. And we often do visit Bridgman Park on the weekends. It's a fantastic, fantastic site. I wasn't able to attend yesterday, however, through the course of listening to people today. Frankly, I've heard zero credible arguments against the proposed site, aside from, you know, run of the mill NIMBYism. And hearing no persuasive credible points, I'm strongly in support of the proposal, just due to the significant need in the community. A few points in no particular order. Again, was just made aware of this meeting today, so I'm so I've put together some notes quite hastily. Property values. So I am a young person. I have a young family. As a result, have a fairly significant mortgage on my property, as you can imagine. Pay taxes. I find it particularly callous to raise the concern of lower property values in an area that's among the richest in the country. It's absolutely absurd to me to raise concerns like that. Back in his concerns regarding children. As mentioned previously, my foregoled daughter attends daycare right across the street. My sister lives on Keith Road, not far from the site. My kids spend a lot of time at her house in the yard. I spent a significant portion of my adult years living in the city of Vancouver. Near various types of supporting housing sites. I've never in my life witnessed any of the residents of these locations passing young children or families. The notion that Bridgman Park would be overrun with, I'm not even gonna repeat some of the words that that were that were used earlier to refer to the the residents. But but the idea that, you know, the park would be overrun would be comedic if the implications weren't so serious. You know, I feel a hundred percent comfortable with the project and my children spending a lot of time nearby, including, as I mentioned, right across the street. Finally, the implications of not providing supportive housing. So as someone before me mentioned, I think this we versus none mentality is inhumane and frankly not constructive. The potential implications of not providing the type of supportive housing far outweigh the risks. You know, the only examples I've heard this evening have been frankly sensational. You know, we're talking about people under the influence wandering onto the highway and other, quite frankly, yeah, ridiculous. There's zero evidence to suggest these incredible risks. Finally, the reality is there, it doesn't seem to me, again, this is my first time attending a council meeting, there doesn't seem to me to be a better location in the district. And so if not here, out there, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, John Miller. The next speaker is virtual participant Sam. You are still muted in the Zoom system. I can see that. There you go.
Could you hear me now?
Yes, I can. I can hear and see you. Welcome. You you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, yes, uh, thank you for having me and I have this chance to talk tonight. Actually, I just want to start that I came from Iran, a country that the government is a dictatorship. I came to Canada because I wanted to have the freedom of speech and my voice would be here. And I didn't have any plan to talk tonight. Last night I was there in person and I hear the opposition and the people in favor, they talk. Actually, I didn't want to talk, but I, I put lots of thought in it last night and tonight. And to tell you truth, I didn't sleep last night at all. I Google again about this project. The other project in Canada, in in B C, in Canada, in U S. I I wanted to be fair. I didn't want to to be blamed that I I I don't have any compassion and lack of compassion. Yeah, we we don't want any homeless people. But why I said that I came from Iran under a dictatorship because Canada, I can't talk and I have this hope that I could be here. Mister Mayor and councilors, you are elected in this country. You're supposed to be our voice as a resident here. Our concerns supposed to be here. As I saw last night and here and the other nights ritually and in person. The majority of people who are in favor of this project don't live in this area. This is a fact. The majority of people who live in this area and are residents of this area and homeowners. Especially families with young children are against this project. In opposition of these projects because of the concern already been mentioned and you know it, everybody knows it. I'm still hopeful that I could see a difference between Canada and Iran, which I experienced dictatorship there. I wanted to have a voice there. Nobody listened to me. Obviously, nobody cared there. I had to flee the country. I had because of threat of that government because I was kind of person I was allowed there. And they couldn't stand me. They treated me. I had to to leave that country. I'm now a proud Iranian Canadian. I'm a citizen of Canada. I'm really proud under the Canadian map. I love that map. I love this country. I pay my taxes. The first day I came to this country, I pay my taxes. Even I haven't had any, no criminal history, nothing. I try to be a good citizen. Dark concerns is about locate, location, location, location. And if we say location, we shouldn't be blamed because lack of compassion to irrelevant things. Who says if we say this location is not appropriate for this project among so many daycares, schools, families with young children, now we are blamed or we we are the lack, the people with who, the lack of compassion? I'm familiar. I you, I used to, for a while, I used to drive a taxi and I came in in Vancouver. Believe me, I've been in a case examples like Travelodge, East Hastings, Beavik and third, look at that shelter. Look at the Travelodge, look at the East Hastings, look at the several, several, several locations that I've been there. Pickup dropping of people there and I looked at the right, the heaven of drug dealers. They love it there because their customers are there. The second thing is that when we have lots of, lots of lots, go from Maine toward Dullerton Highway, Old Dullerton Highway. Where the Budwell School is, the second branch of Budwell School there. Forest and forest, lots of lands away from families with young children. Who says we are against homelessness? We are in favor of helping homelessness. But we just say this location is not right. Why so rush? This location is not right. Please, please, I finish it very soon. Please, councilors and mayor. I'm hopeful that you that are elected and by our votes supporting us as a D N V residence, not Loma, not estate, not province and not coastal health. They don't care about us. They want to add another project to their resume. They they don't care about aftermath. This is the truth and the case examples. Just go and look, yeah, on theory, on a paper, everyone says that. Oh, it would be, it wouldn't be any problem. No problem. Don't worry. But in reality, we go to Travelodge and we see needles, we see drug dealers and we see all the problems. So we have right to have concerns. Please, please, please make a difference between Iran and Canada. Be our voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Sam. The next speaker I have is Ben Barnes, joining us virtually. Ben, can you hear me?
I can indeed. Can you hear me?
Clearly, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone this evening for having me and for last minute letting me speak. I just wanted to make it very prominent here that I live right in the center of the community that this is targeting at the moment. And when I say targeting, it's being looked at to be put in. And I came here as an immigrant, like many other people. I've worked hard. I've paid my taxes and I've worked damn hard for years to be able to afford in this beautiful location I'm in. I just want to say you've built a phenomenal family, friendly community here. All we're asking for is for you to understand and give us a comprehensive plan of this development. Something I feel and many that you have failed to do so far. We're not saying we are against homelessness. And we want to make, and when I say we, I'm speaking as the community because the community that I live on here in the Salin area, there's a minimum one thousand four hundred people who have been signing petitions to say they're against this. That's directly in this community, where it's going. But what I want to say is we're not against homelessness. You have to take in the facilities and the surroundings of what you want to present here. The facilities I'm talking about is daycares, schools, young families with children, families with grandchildren. It's all at risk because of the safety of drugs. We know this will be a place that is positioned for drugs. For myself, I want to have a family in a couple of years' time. I don't want my future children involved with drugs. I walk my dog daily up and down the river in this community. I fear that if this goes ahead, even my dog, like many other dogs that have walked him and down this river and in the area each day, they could pick up a needle, they could tread into a needle. That comes at a financial cost to us for vet bills and also our dogs are part of our family as well. So when we talk about children, there are some of us who have our furry friend children as well. So please take that into account for the local area. Now, what I want to touch on yesterday was there was a lady who said she stayed in the Travelodge and she did not feel comfortable there. She was grateful she had a roof over her head, but she was not comfortable there because of the drugs being used. It's a concern to me that someone who's been in that position, he even directly has said they did not feel comfortable with drugs being used in that vicinity. I ask all the people here today, are you happy with drugs being brought into the area? Will your loved ones, your partners, your children, your grandchildren, will they all feel safe? If people with mental health issues, the majority being males, drug users, verbal abusers, potential physical abuse. Is this going to be a risk to the to the community? Absolutely. It's got red flags and I think a much, much more due diligence is needed in this. This is a fast track program designed for failure and it's a high risk state to the community. What we need to acknowledge is the latest Lumens building has been a nightmare. What you're putting out here is all rainbows and daffodils. I don't want it to be a nice idea. I want it to be a thorough, thought through plan. I came to this area, as mentioned before, believing it was one of the most up and coming areas of the North Shore and I want to raise a family here. It's really, really sensitive to me that I can grow my family here. If I know that there is a risk, I won't bring a family into this community if I know there's risk here. What I want to acknowledge is that the evidence isn't there. You haven't shown enough evidence to say why this isn't going to be another mess like the Travelodge. We really want you to convince us with a thorough, thought through plan and concrete contracts with Loomis and other partners that will both protect those people using the facility, but also us as the community. The proposal that has been presented does not have enough evidence to make me feel this is a thorough, thought through plan. Yesterday, the proposal was nice and dandy and nothing was mentioned about complex housing in your casings that you showed yesterday. It was all rainbows and unicorns, but if you get this wrong, this will really impact the neighborhood. Nobody's talked about the Travelodge and what happened there. The North Shore news stated eight people died there. What are you going to do to prevent this? We haven't heard anything about how you're going to prevent situations like that. The last thing I'd like to leave you with is, why should this community think that it should be any different to the Travelodge this plan? All that has been said is there will be more staff and twenty four seven support. So what? What does that supportive services mean? I was informed by representatives when I attended the Holiday Inn that if these people are outside the building, then they are not responsible for anything that happens. To be honest, no questions could be answered. They were all diverted and statistics were answered with. Who protects the community? There is no police stations. There'll be no fire stations soon by twenty twenty six because this one will be disappeared. It's not fair to keep putting the blame to someone else on another department's resolve. Are the RCMP aware that you're gonna put this on them to have to deal with all the time? That all I ask in my very final statement, sorry, literally fifteen seconds. If you're really looking for a quick, fast supportive services here, that is a drug free zone or female housing or elderly care, then everyone would say yes. If you want to support the homeless community, I haven't heard anyone here who would be against that. What I ask from you as the electives is for this project is that the appropriate research has been conducted and presented to us, the community, to show that this is not going to negatively impact the community or put us at risk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ben Barnes. Next speaker I have is Hazen Colbert. Joining me virtually.
Counselor, can you hear me?
Counselor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Yeah, I'm gonna be very sure. I absolutely support this project for exactly the same reasons that all members of this council support it. Because it's not in my neighborhood. Uh, thank you very much, that's all I need to say.
Thank you for your comments, Hazen Colbert. Okay, uh. Again, I'm going to be looking around for first time speakers, first time speakers, uh, yeah, come on up. If you could start with your name, that would be appreciated.
My name is Zoe. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to talk about my concerns. And actually, as a hearman, you know, um. I love people who are in need of our help. But we are not talking about the elderly people or refugees or single moms or long comms people that really they need help and we are paying taxes to help those as the for myself as an immigrant, I feel for everybody. But we are talking about sixty five person who has mental issue and drug issue. That. They should, in my opinion. They should live in, I mean, they don't need just food and the roof. They need more extra help from government like, you know, living under and supervising, especially supervising like medicine, psychologists and different, those is the army needs. So, um. They're going to causes, they're going to cause lots of problem in our community because they are not communicate with us as the neighbors, they're going to live alone and deal with their issues here. They're going to bring drug dealers to our neighbors, you know. They're going to cause more accident in the middle of the street because they are not, they don't, they don't know what are they doing. And you know, by the other hand, um, I know two other, um, um, this, um, busy housing uh, in North Vancouver, one of them, if you recently heard about the, one of them in the motel in Catherine Road. My daughter in law had three times breaking to his, to her car. So of course she didn't report to the I C B C or police, but it doesn't mean that criminal has decreased or stopped somewhere, no, of course it's not like that. So, um, and we see lots of trashes in North Vancouver, everywhere. That shows with the cards and lots of, you know, trashes, stuff, stuff like around the city. They need more than roof and food. They should live in a rehab center, not in the middle of the society. They should live somewhere be safe for themselves and safe for us, our kids, our grandchildren. So, you know, in, um, our area with lots of parks and, you know, um, um, uh. Walking ground, you know, we still have lots of trashes, needles. And as my friend shows you that lots of, um, daycares are on and kids are playing there. So it's not safe. They need rehab center, not just food and, you know, shelter. Thank you, I tried to tell about my concern and, you know. Uh, hard to deal with these issues around in our community. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, the next speaker is virtual speaker Lauren Koenig.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Uh, clearly, welcome, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect, thank you very, very much for letting me speak tonight, um, I'll be very quick, as quick as I can, so I know it's been a late evening. Um, I've grown up in the North Shore, born and bred North Vancouver girl, growing up in Blue Ridge and I've decided to move into the Sealand Village, I was one of the first people to buy a house there seven years ago and when it went up. The first piece I would like to address, there's four points to my conversation here is, um. Mister Mayor, you, you have spent time turning down the applauses for, for special or for comments made in the room and I appreciate the, the support around anti bullying there. But I do think that it has to be considered that when people are calling people who don't want this place, um, uncompassionate. That is bullying in itself, um, these projects, um. People are compassionate about homeless people, they're, they're, um. Compassionate about their own families and I actually do think that it's a form of bullying for lots of people to come on this call and call us the other side of the opposition of this, uncompassionate bunch, um, people, I, I just, I think that that should be ruled out. Um, number two, um, I'm not saying no to a shelter going there. I am sure most people who have spoken today, I haven't actually heard any opposition about, um, a woman's shelter, an elderly shelter. Um, even a men's, I, I, I don't think that the issue is a shelter. I think it's about the mixture of, of a drug use, um, and I can talk a little bit about why, but I also do think that mixing men and women is an issue potentially. But the biggest thing for me is mixing drugs and non-drug users in a facility. Um, I've been around drug addicts. Almost virtually my entire life. And if somebody is trying to get better and go into recovery, you cannot stick them in a facility that provides them with access or people around them with access. So are you stinting people's ability to get better as a result of putting them in a mixed shelter? Why not make this a drug free shelter? Like, where has, why has this? But why not make this a drug food shelter? And the third piece, and I, I do call kudos to the gentleman I was talking about the planning process, I completely agree. I, I don't think that the downside of this project has been thought through at all. Um, and I also don't think that the research has been done on this facility. Um. The, the presentation that was presented yesterday, and I apologize, it was elementary, there, they showed lovely pictures of clouds and, and, and and facilities that have been put on the North Shore. But they didn't actually address any of the issues that have happened with some of these shelters that have gone on and they painted a rosy picture. What has Lumens learnt from the atrocity that has happened at Travelodge? I would like to hear how they have bettered themselves, right? Maybe there is a way to put these places, uh, the, uh, a, a, a shelter in place to help drug addicts to get better, but there's no plan around it, we don't know what's going to happen and I think it's your job to calm the neighborhood and the research hasn't been done to do that. Um, lastly, um. Lots of, I, I walk around the neighborhood, I think that most people who are opposed to this walk around the neighborhood all the time, go for runs. I hope I have a family in a couple of years, but a lot of people that particularly men say they feel safe. There's, there's certain places, I, I don't walk alone downtown anymore, I don't feel safe as a female. And I do think that you have to take care of the younger female generation, the elderly generation so that they can walk around their neighborhoods and stay safe, I'm not saying that putting this program place in this spot in place is necessarily going to cause an atrocity. But A, the research hasn't been presented, it hasn't been done, hasn't been presented, no answers had been, been taken from the being received from the community, from the Holiday Inn, the limited amount of time that people have had at the Zoom meetings. Um, and I just, I don't think that you have, and as the gentleman said earlier, figured out the downside. If you mess this up, what is the impact to the community and how do we write this correct? Write this, it's not your community that's going to be messed up, um, and it takes a, a ton, a ton of time to, uh, to mend it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Lauren Koenig. Is there anyone else here in the room that would like to speak a first time, yes? And then I've got J B joining us virtually that would like to speak as well next. Welcome, you have five minutes to address the hearing, if you could start with your name, that'd be appreciated.
Hi, my name is Paul and I'm a resident of North Vancouver. Uh, I want to start with that, I'm a, I'm a first responder in Vancouver and I've been frequent in these buildings all the time. And I want to start with one small comment yesterday with to not listen to the public, particularly infuriating. As a local elected official, I can only basically represent council as well. To that end, I sort of believe, you know, this public forum is an illusion and my opinions don't really matter to council. Regardless, as a resident and someone that spends a lot of time in these places, I have to speak my mind. Uh, I wanted to sort of ask with the neighborhood, you know, again, why are we doing it here? We're already putting up enough other programs in this area, we already have some social housing, we've got some, basically a bunch of co-ops, stuff like that. We're basically adding to, you know, a lot of other things that are already going on in this area. Um, I'm a parent of two and I've got a dog. And I don't, I live in a townhouse, I don't live in a luxury life of privilege with like a big yard or like that. There's these parks, this public space is my backyard and this is where myself and my family spend all of our time. The, uh, putting, you know, a lot of this stuff with a lot of drug use circles at daycare and playgrounds, I can tell you is not a good life decision. I see it firsthand where I see needles basically stabbed into poles where people lean on them and have to go on regular cocktails to make sure they don't pick up any communicable diseases. Um, oh, currently in our townhouse complex, down, a couple of doors down from us, we have a regular house that's stealing drugs. It's gotten bad enough that bikes and lots of other stuff is being stolen out of our neighborhood and we've had to put up security cameras as a result. So this is one isolated house, much less a whole, basically a complex where we're going to be putting in a number of these people who are going to be trying to fuel habits by any means necessary. Uh, this is a problem that can't be managed as it is, much less adding to it. I, uh, my wife talked to a couple of R C M P officers that she knows in North Vancouver and have also expressed their frustration with the fact that the Travelodge is just going to go there and we're basically going to add to the problem. The, uh, her concerns were basically completely validated by the R C M P officers that she talked to. The, uh. When I, uh, again, as I said, as I'm a first responder downtown, I'm in these spaces all the time. I know, I worked, I got off this morning after a night shift and I was in one twenty six times overnight. The, uh, the model of basically taking homeless and putting them in a home doesn't solve a systemic problem of people with mental health or addiction, putting a roof over their head basically just gives them a space, but there's no pride of ownership, the systemic problems that they have will continue to happen because there's not any support programs in place. I know there's talk about having systems in place where there'd be twenty four hour care. I see these places where they have the twenty four hour care. It's not really an end up on a really great solution and often doesn't get taken advantage of. The, uh, and in Northland, we don't have the systems in place to be able to support a large population. The, uh, at this point, for me to get a, just a G P appointment for my two year old, takes me over a month to do. I can't even get a G P or a doctor on in North Vancouver. So, you know, if we're talking about a little bunch of people that are going to need a lot of special care and attention that we, there's really no services in place to be able to help them. The, uh, yeah, I would certainly recommend members of some councils on that to maybe try going through some of these buildings that were in a similar model through the downtown east side and you can see how absolutely horrific some of these places are. The people that are genuinely trying to get themselves out of a bad spot do not stand a chance. The, uh, I know somebody's referenced it yesterday with regarding the Vancouver is dying documentary. It is a documentary, so it's going to have its own political agenda, but it does have some very valid points about how this model isn't an ideal model. The, uh, the other one that I know a lot of people talk about is we're adding more people, you know, to give them a better chance to get forward. These people can't get ahead like this, really nobody can get off the North Shore, that whole area is a gridlock. I know the city talked, the district talked about putting more buses in, but the more buses isn't going to work when they're stuck in traffic with the rest of us. The, uh, I know you're probably getting a lot of basically push on this from the, you know, the federal government, which are pushing all these mandates. But if you look at a lot of the figures that they talk about are east coast figures, so when they talk about overdoses in Ottawa in the last decade, they're talking about sixty five, and I can tell you I've done more than sixty five overdoses in the last week. The, uh. It's safe to basically say you want to put it here when it's not in close proximity to your house. But this, again, this is our backyard, we, this is our outdoor space that we spend. I, uh, I, I see what goes on with these places every day. I work and it's, it's very unfortunate for the people, I wish them the best, but it's a systemic problem where just putting a roof over their head is not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Paul. Uh, the next speaker I have is virtual speaker J B.
Hi, uh, good evening, uh, my name's James Billingsley, yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council for letting me speak. Um, just as everyone has said here, I, and this is not surprising, uh, I of course support housing for the homeless. And I would add that I support housing for the homeless, uh, at this location. Um, uh, whoever, whoever needs it. Um, but what I am struggling to support though, and in having listened to, um, yesterday and today, is this particular plan being proposed and namely this being, uh, what's sometimes been referred to as a wet facility uh, with inadequate community supports in place. Uh, I understand the rationale of why having a wet facility, um, can be important. But I also, and I think everyone should appreciate the risks that are associated with that and, and the downsides and, and many people have touched on them. Some maybe are in, inflating what the problem will be, but, uh, nevertheless, I think that they're valid, uh, safety, um, concerns that have been raised. Uh, that they are valid. And what I would just ask the council to consider when they're turning their mind to the proposal and deciding what to do is whether the, you know, the four pillars, uh, the four pillars that have been identified as necessary to addressing drug addiction or drug addiction crisis can be addressed for the people who, who would be living in this housing, in this particular location. Uh, that, you know, those four pillars, there's harm reduction, uh, prevention, treatment and enforcement. And my concern is that this project with the lack of community supports available here. Uh, there, there's not a whole lot, uh, a, a, around, uh, you know, it's got to take a second bus from Fibs Exchange, which is kind of your, your main conduit through downtown. It, it's, I, I'm not really sure, it, it's a place where, uh, the people living there would have ready access to the supports they need to deal with their, um, addiction issues. Is there a better place or another place? I, I, I don't know, but, but, but I would just ask council to think, uh. And, you know, it, it's a difficult, uh, issue to, to, to address, uh, but, but to think whether, uh. The people living in this location would have the supports they need to actually address their addiction issues. Because our, I, I believe our current approach to the addiction crisis, um, is failing in large part because those four pillars aren't being implemented. Uh, the overdose crisis is continuing, it's only getting worse, um, overdose deaths haven't um, improved from month to month, if, if you look at the statistics from the B C coroner, it's caused primarily by, by fentanyl. Um, and so unless there's a comprehensive plan in place or if, if the council and, and, and you, uh, Mayor Little have considered that the needs of the people who'll be living there can actually be addressed here in, in this particular, uh, neighborhood and the, the surrounding community, I, I would just caution that, you know, this is embarking on a bit of an experiment to, uh, to, 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 you know, build housing of the, of this nature, that it would be a so-called wet, uh, facility, uh, but not uh, you know, aside from the few supports that have been mentioned, not having those other pillars, uh, that are so essential uh, to actually helping people back towards, uh, the path towards, uh, recovery. Housing is one piece of it, but it's not the whole piece, and if those other pillars aren't, uh, i- in, in place. Um, what, what are the impacts going to be? So I, I just ask council to think about that when, when deciding whether this particular proposal, um, with the proponents who are, uh, in support of it, uh, Luma and B C Housing, uh, has actually satisfied council that, uh, it, it can be a success in this particular location, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, J B. Would anybody else like to address this hearing for a first time? Yes, and then we'll go there and there, okay, yeah, come on up. Probably after those three, we'll have a little bit of a leg stretch to break and make sure that questions. get transferred over to staff. That would put about the halfway mark where we're likely to end up uh, for this evening's meeting. So uh, so I, I've got you uh, there and then in the back row as well and then we'll, we'll be going for a bit of a five-minute leg stretch if that's all right. Welcome, uh, you have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Andrew Baker. I'm a seventeen-year resident of the North Van area. Um, I'm a proud member of this neighborhood. I've worked as a mountain bike coach. I am a business owner, a homeowner. Um, I'm a mentor. I my best friend, I, I don't know if you noticed, I had to, actually had to get up and take a phone call. That was my best friend who is a Native American who actually fell through the cracks and ended up in one of these units. It did not work for him. He got out of there, got the help he needed with the help from his friends. And he is now a prominent member of this community and owns a house here. I just found that very coincidental that he called me while I was sitting here. Um, part of that phone call, I always take his phone calls because you never know. He's been thirteen years clean. You never know. It's a long game that you have to work with on these things. My concerns are much along the same lines as everyone that has spoke so far. Last night it was Jeff and Dan. We had Irene this evening. Sarah, Ally, Graham Alexander, Cole Car, Zaher, Steve, Lorraine, Sam, Ben Barnes, Paul, James, the doctor with his extremely short phone call. You know, I stand behind all of these people and I believe that their comments about the compassion term being thrown and us that are opposed to this not having compassion is of, like they said, a form of bullying. I also find that photos being taken for people being up here and being posted is also another form of intimidation. I am not comfortable sitting here speaking in front of people. I'm sweating my, sweating through my sweater right now. I don't like doing this and it made it extremely uncomfortable to do so, knowing that I'm being judged by others. The safety concerns with this site are real. I took the time myself to go for a walk through the travel lodge. I'm a six-foot gentleman. I'm two hundred and twenty pounds. I'm not a small guy. And I walked through there at one o'clock in the afternoon and I felt extremely un- uneasy. Last night after the meeting, I got home, had a quick bite to eat and then I went for a drive and I went over there and I went through a walk late at night. It was about eleven-thirty by that time. And I'll tell you, it was a completely different scenario than it was in the middle of the day. I was scared. It was not a comfortable sight. I was looking over my shoulder and I got out of there really quick. My house that I purchased in twenty nineteen is less than fifty meters away. My neighbor and I have the clearest view of this site that are not houses next door. I am across Mountain Highway. I overlook the intersection of Keith Road and Mountain Highway. I've seen an increase in people walking down our back alley that is a dead out, end alley already since the they put in the walking path that ends at the end of our street. Slipping my, the name of that anyhow. It's a real concern. I'm not against housing. I'm very for it. I moved to North Van because this is a community that is completely different from any other that I've visited. And I would expect that our town would come up with a completely different solution to a problem that we all have. And it is clear in the statistics that what is going on and the help we are giving them is not working. I feel that we need to reassess this and rushing it through within a two-month time span seems like it's a very reactive, not a proactive approach to this. I would really hope that we would consider to take a step back, reconsider who's going to be running a facility such as this. The location doesn't bother me nearly as much if it was run properly. But there's nothing showing that it is going to be run properly and there has not been enough due diligence to give us as taxpaying residents in that community comfort in the idea that this is being forced upon us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Your comments, Andrew Barker. Yes. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name, that'd be appreciated.
Hello, my name is Ed and I live in the local vicinity to this proposal. Um, straight off the bat, um, a lot of people are concerned that people are prejudiced against um, social housing and people who need homes. In this area, there's already five hundred non-market and social homes under consideration excluding this. This project is for uh, persons with substance use disorder. Realistically, it's not for people struggling financially to rent homes. And this location, this location for someone with substance use disorder potentially could be great. Um, there's a liquor store and a cannabis store less than five hundred meters away. That's a great place to put it. Um, as was pointed out last night, Carlton Court has a security-free car park, which is going to be a great place to go and potentially raid. Um, it's near uh, public transport, so it's got to be a lot of free bus rides being used. Um, when I used to commute downtown, uh, lots of people would get on the bus for free and they were not very pleasant. Um, when people do want to use their substances, not inside these facilities, there's a brand new renovated park. I think that cost the district two hundred thousand dollars. That is going to be a great place on a nice sunny day. Um, there's also a great bridge right next to it for a pour when it's raining heavily. That's where they're going to go. It's just where they're going to go. There's also near the highway, um, so drug dealers can come in and leave as they please and the RCMP aren't going to be able to catch them. Just like the drug dealer who assassinated a rival drug dealer in the superstar car park. That happened not long ago, guys. Right? And you want more of this? Great. Yeah, Dallas Snyder was pointed out in the presentation that there were fifty positive letters about this. Out of all the other feedback, just fifty, but that was apparently good. There was also a pet petition mentioned that over nine hundred people signed that they did not want this. That is a vast difference in opinion from your constituency, from your the people you represent. So if you ignore that, you're ignoring the people. The actual proposal to council uh, that was done at the beginning. The proposal says this. The proposal has been reviewed by fire, environment, real estate and properties, legal, community, planning, communications and engineering. Who is missing from that list? The RCMP. How can you not put a proposal for a drug, a substance use disorder facility that doesn't involve the RCMP? That's outlandish. It's short-sighted. It's clearly a very bad proposal. Um, another point yesterday uh, was made out in the proposal regarding crime that areas that have support for these, for people who'd commit crimes, the crime falls eighteen percent. But we have to build the facility, let the crimes happen before this eighteen percent starts. So what is the expected increase in crime? Is it a hundred percent? Is it a thousand percent before this eighteen percent drop happens? No one's told us. Also, uh, I discovered the Helpseekers report. It was commissioned by the Vancouver Police Department. It was uh, uh, released last year. Uh, I'll be very quick because the time's running out. The city of Vancouver spends more than five billion dollars on social support and community services. That is more than Vancouver Coastal Health budget by a billion dollars. And we can't put money to the problem because what we're doing right now is not working. We just throw money at it. It's not working. Uh, also, this report found that one point three billion dollars of this was going to charities, but only twelve percent is traceable to actually delivering direct services that have considerable help to this crisis. Um, thirdly, now fi- finally, I guess, my final one. This report also found that the probability of a person with substance use disorder would be remitted within thirty days of being discharged from an emergency department in BC was sixty percent. So these facilities are not helping these guys. Sixty percent of the time they're going back and back. So I'd just like to say very clearly that this report and the evidence being done by the council is completely ignoring safety for everybody involved. And I'd also like to say to the people who are saying, hopefully your child doesn't get sick and go to these facilities. If one of my children gets sick, I'm bringing them home. I'm going to look after them. I'm not going to let a facility that drains them and just uses them over and over again to stay in one of these places. It's, I'm going to look after my child and other people maybe should as well. Thank you.
Your comments, Ed. And just before we take a break, there was a last, yes, please. Yes, please. Oh, okay. No, we're gonna, we're still on first-time speakers and we're actually just, you know, I said I was going to take a break around nine o'clock, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a five-minute leg stretch at this point. And so we'll return, maybe we'll go to nine, ten, give people an opportunity to run to the washroom and stuff. And then uh, we'll continue with first-time speakers and once first-time speakers is done, we're going to go to question and answers between uh, uh, our staff responses to the council questions, uh, of which there are a lot. I'd be happier with one more. Don't need form for public hearing. Don't require to for an advertised. Right. So the council um, just had an opportunity to confer. What we're trying to figure out is just time management. So our policy is that we go until about ten-thirty at night, uh, same thing we did last night. Uh, we have thirty-five questions that have been submitted from counselors to the staff. And so we want to go through, read those into the record, get the responses on the record. Uh, it's probably going to take about an hour, which means we're unlikely to complete the meeting tonight. And so then the question became about uh, when we would like to reconvene the meeting and we, we had a quick look at our schedules. And so our intent now is to uh, run through the rest of the evening, night till about ten-thirty. We'll get those questions read and on the record. Um, and then we will reconvene um, uh, for the third night on December seventh. Uh, that is our next opportunity that our calendars work well enough to be able to get a quorum of council together for um, a third night. Um, and so uh, that's our intent at this point. So if people can't stay, I understand. We'll keep checking and if you, you don't stick around with your name, then we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we check back in and see uh, who can uh, stay through at this point. But um, what I'd like to do at this point now is like I said, there's thirty-five questions that has been submitted by the council. And I think it would be a good idea for us to get those questions um, and get responses to those questions here tonight. And uh, and then we'll resume the public hearing speakers. So I'm going to look to staff, Ms. Atfa, will you be uh, sort of managing the questions and responses?
Good evening, your worship. Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to do so. Good evening, uh, members of council and hello to all the community members who are here today in person and virtually. My name is Tina Atfa. I'm the manager of community planning. As noted, there are thirty-five questions, your worship, and I would like to read each one out and with your permission uh, ask that various people respond to these questions. Staff as uh, Tamsin Guppy and our partners who are sitting on the other side. Um, Naomi Brunnemeyer from BC Housing, Kevin Eaton from Luma Native Housing Society and Megan Coleman from Vancouver Coastal Health. With your permission, I'll start with question number one. For Tamsin, where will parking be located for residents and staff?
Thank you. Uh, we have a slide for this. Erica, do you have any luck or otherwise I can try and.
Your microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Uh, and we have some slides. I think Erica's got them up. If we can connect, Erica.
Ms. Branson, do you have stereo?
Lovely. Thank you. So this slide.
We're going to get you to be nice and loud, Tamsin, right into the microphone, please.
Sorry, slightly different space and I'm not tucked in enough, but here, I'll try again. Okay, so this slide um, shows the site plan. So at the bottom of the slide is East Keith Road. On the left is Mountain Highway. The white is showing an approximate building footprint for the site and the red is outlining the site itself. What the dark gray shows is the road allowance that runs behind the site on that angle. That is where the existing BC Hydro right-of-way is, but the right-of-way only takes a portion of the road allowance. The road allowance is the full twenty meters. The proposal is that uh, and that we would explore having two act, sorry. We are currently exploring options. One of the things the engineers have shown us is that we can either access the site from the rear or we could have a right-in, right-out at the front along with potentially a parking pocket. So we do have different ways of addressing code and um, emergency access requirements. We're currently thinking that the rear is the better way to go and that is based on discussions with our colleagues in engineering, transportation engineering, um, as well as of course fire and uh, the code specialists in our building department. The design team have also been looking at this and are also exploring the rear access. So again, that's what's being shown because that is at this very early stage, what we're considering. But again, that preliminary assessment showed that we have options on this site, which we don't always do. So that's a, a good thing. So the idea is that we would open some type of rail road or lane allowance at the rear, bringing access into the rear of the site and roughly where the um, the, I think there's a black arrow there. Well, sorry, the black arrows show potential first responder access. Sorry, I moved. The black arrows show potential access in and where the arrow ends and the gray area widens to the northeast of the building would be a potential area that could be parking for staff, residents and visitors as well as loading. And remember, because there's um, kitchen facilities here, you'd be having food deliveries and so on, as well as potential access for first responders if there were medical emergencies and so on. So this is what is currently under discussion and I think that kind of relates to question one, which was where will the parking be located? Uh, and again, that's at the rear, but also question three, which was around the access egress and so on. And also question fifteen, which related to, is there BC Hydro access at the rear? So now I think we move on to question number two.
Thank you very much, uh, your worship. Question number two. Can staff describe the travel lodge example, what it was originally used for and the challenges of the building and site? And again, I will ask, please that Tamsin Guppy start this question and maybe added to by BC Housing.
Sure. Thank you very much. Um, so I'm going to read, uh, just because this is a couple of different ideas and I want to make sure I cover it properly. So the travel lodge is a former motel that was, that is being used as a temporary, sorry, that was being used as a temporary. No, is, was, is. Sorry, was used as a shelter, is using, being used as a temporary emergency housing. And it's in contrast to this proposal, which is for permanent homes in a purpose-built, secure, supportive housing building. Probably the biggest difference between these two styles of buildings is that the travel lodge is a motel with the doors straight out onto the street. So there's very, it's very hard to provide oversight. Uh, whereas the- Whereas the purpose-built facility would have staff at the doorway. So you, first of all, you have to fall bin, you go past staff. It's a communal entrance and it's oversight. There's of course also facilities inside. And I may get my partners here to, to kind of elaborate on that a little bit more. Also, in addition, the proposed facility would have key services like the kitchen, the dining area, laundry facilities and so on. For background, the Travelodge opened during the COVID pandemic as an emergency response center, which is a shelter and not housing. The Travelodge was initially operated by Lookout Housing Society. Given the need for transition and supportive housing, the lease with Travelodge was expanded and is now operating as a temporary, as temporary housing and it's operated by Lumen Native Housing Society. Rider, rider architecture, the architects working on behalf of the partners are still, of course, in the early design stages, we just test ideas for this site, but have extensive experience in designing supportive housing projects and will be, I know, looking at, sorry, I lost my gaze, and are looking at the proposed, how the proposed building will address crime prevention through environmental design principles, while also fostering inclusion and community among residents. Now, I know I didn't speak as smoothly as sometimes, so partners, is there anything that I missed or should add?
Yeah, great. I mean, so my name is Naomi Brunemeyer. I'm the Director of Regional Development for the Lower Mainlands at B C Housing. I was tasked during the pandemic to come up with emergency solutions for those who were unable to isolate themselves. So when we were given a shelter order, there were a number of people that couldn't do that. And so B C Housing across the province brought three thousand people indoors during the pandemic. And it started with fifteen beds at the Travelodge. And due to the great demand for people requiring housing on the North Shore, we made a decision to expand that to try to bring more people indoors, knowing that we were looking to create permanent affordable supportive housing in the community. And so as Tamsin said, it's not ideal. It has exterior corridors, so there is no internal corridors. It's not something we would tend to want to do. We've learned our lesson that buying hotels and creating supportive housing is not potentially the best form. And so that's why it's a very exciting opportunity to be able to purpose-built supportive housing on the North Shore. And it's also stick-built. So it allows us more creativity and flexibility to do that because it's not a modular form. We're not replicating the same shape. We can use the building to meet the site. And I think most importantly is that the Travelodge has no community space, so no place for anybody to hang out. They're very small rooms, so the East Keith Road will have larger rooms, so they'll just be more comfortable. There's a kitchenette for people to be able to cook in their own place and a little fridge. There is community amenity space in the building, a lounge, a dining hall. Meals are actually served in the dining hall, although people can choose to have them in their rooms. Whereas in the Travelodge, a meal service is brought in. So it's, it's like temporary accommodation for people and they've been there for a long time. So, so it's not nearly the model we would want to do. It's not something B C Housing would support us as permanent supportive housing. And that's why we're so excited to be able to provide a different environment for people to go in. I also wanted to make it clear that the Travelodge didn't follow the same referral process as we would on, on that East Keith Road supportive housing. So at the beginning, when we had fifteen people, I'm gonna be honest, it was the Squamish Nation and Vancouver Coastal Health who were begging us, who had people who were actually positive for COVID and had nowhere to go. So it started with actually being a COVID response for people who were positive to make sure that they could survive, that they could stay indoors and that they could heal from this disease prior to vaccinations, when it was really hard on people. These were folks that already had compromised immune systems. And so this was the first response. And then it grew from there. So we didn't have the same, you know, referral process. We didn't have coordinated access, which I think is a conversation we'll have later in the questions. And so isn't, and isn't quite the same way we would tenant the supportive housing building. That's right.
Next question.
Thank you very much. Can staff?
Oh, my. Hi. Sorry, I just want to add one comment to that. Thank you so much, Naomi and Tamsin. My name's Megan Coleman. I'm Director of Complex Care Planning for the Regional Addiction Program with Vancouver Coastal Health. I just want to repeat a very short statement, but I think very vital in relation to the Travelodge. The Travelodge is a temporary emergency housing setting. The proposal for the East Keith Road Initiative is providing permanent homes that is purpose-built for supported housing. I just want to repeat that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atfa.
Thank you very much. Next question. Can staff advise of any issues, challenges, issues or challenges that surround emergency access, egress, ingress, et cetera? This is related to the new.
We've answered that one. We're on to number four.
I had a feeling that was the case. This is why we're a team doing this together. Question number four for Tamsin. What type of funding will be provided yearly for support services for the residents of the project?
Thank you. And this also relates a little bit to question fourteen, so I'll start it off. And again, my, my partners want to, may want to, our partners may want to add in.
Sorry, you're referring to numbered questions. I don't have numbered questions. I don't know what question number fourteen is.
Okay, I will read it out as well. My apologies.
And again, nice and loud into the microphone, please.
So number four is what type of funding will be provided yearly? And number fourteen, let me just flip pages here for a second.
We're just gonna need to read the full question out in both cases, please.
Great. So number four is the one Tina just read out, which is what type of funding will be provided yearly for support services for the residents of the project? Number fourteen is what is the assessed value of the district land involved? And what is the total amount of funds being offered by the provincial government to this proposed project? So a little bit different, but also related in terms of the costs and the money that's going towards this project. So in terms of the annual operating monies, B C Housing provides access to operating funding to cover staffing, meals, maintenance and programming costs estimated to be two point five million annually. This is for all sixty-five units. Vancouver Coastal Health will cover clinical costs for five complex care units in the order of one point seven million. Now, to the additional points in item number fourteen, which again is also relating to the capital costs, B C assessment, oh, sorry, B C assessment values the land at eight point eight, sorry, eight million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. In terms of the construction costs, the supportive housing fund provides capital construction costs that are benchmarked at five hundred and fifteen thousand per unit for a total cost of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand for the sixty-five units.
That's thirty-three million.
Sorry. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Thirty-three million. Yep. Okay, that's why we have a team. Anything I missed on those questions relating to cost?
An additional comment is that the operating funding that's annually from B C Housing is actually for the duration of the entire lease. So we're proposing a sixty-year program. So that's two point five million dollars. And then it will escalate up every year to cover additional costs for the term of sixty years. So it's not just one year.
There are little, sorry, we were just given this by staff. Questions and answers. And there's, there's no, there's two questions, but then there's just.
Sorry.
I don't know what this is.
Okay, could we just have the clerk address that? Thank you.
I'd like the question and answer sheet that Ms. Guppy has.
Thank you through the chair. The printed copy was, sorry, pardon me, was provided to council. As those will be the slides shown during the question answer, it will also be posted online for the public as well. So it will be made available to everybody.
I think we need the questions and answers because when Ms. Guppy refers to question fourteen, I'm having to count.
So my apologies. We do, I can, these were just being typed as we were going, so we numbered them so we would know which ones. But I can just repeat, we'll just repeat the questions and read them in and then provide them up immediately afterwards.
Thank you. Ms. Atfa.
Next question. Will a community advisory committee be set up to support the relationship between the surrounding neighborhood and project residents that could be supported by all partners? Tamsin and B C Housing and Luma potentially as well.
Thank you. My name's Kevin Eaton. I'm Newt Talnuth from the Houset Nation. And I'm the current Executive Director of Supportive Housing with Luminative Housing Society. I'm gonna read the response provided here and I might caveat with a piece or three after. So in recent experiences from similar projects, this has shown that the most effective solution is a site-specific single point of contact, allowing for quick and effective responses. And also being the face that friends and neighbors get to know of the resident, excuse me, that friends and neighbors get to know as the, as the representatives of the facility. I essentially allowing another point of conduct for that community and that community building aspect, right? So having the ability to call the site specifically if there's a concern needing either addressing or remedying or sort of trouble, troubleshooting to figure out, you know, what avenue to go down. But that's what we want to be, be part of the community and sort of keep those doors open, right? In addition, us, us as operators, Luminative Housing Society will continue to build on our existing relationships with local organizations and first responders. And we'll continue to community liaison or continue this community liaison work in the most effective ways for those partners, as it's about building relationships in whatever format works best. And lastly, we have a history of sharing key celebrations, opening our doors up to the community, inviting folks in to become a part of our community and vice versa. The intention for us isn't to be friction against wherever we happen to land in service of those in need. Our intention is to become one with the community and efforts of flourishing the community. And that being said, the, this proposed project and the intended development of it is a ways off. If the community is wanting a community advisory, but community advisory committee meeting, those conversations can happen down the road when the project's, you know, closer to development, right? There's nothing off the table, basically, at this particular point, just our perspective based off our experiences. This is the best way to foster community out of the gates. Thank you.
Next question, please, Ms. Atfa.
Thank you. Can we please explain the screening process for occupancy in more detail? And I think this is for B C Housing and Luma, please.
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll start it off and maybe Kevin, you can chime in. So B C Housing and Luminative Housing Society will collaborate with local service providers on an assessment process to ensure that the appropriate mix of residents with the right supports are in the building. So more specifically, every potential resident would be considered on an individual basis to ensure that the housing and services provided by the program match the port services they need. The homes would be for adults, seniors and people with disabilities with a priority for people in our local community as there is a significant unmet local need. Residents are not required to be indigenous despite Lumen Native Housing being our operator. The people would need to apply to live here and would have to meet the eligibility requirements around income homelessness and required supports and programming. So B C Housing will work with your local service providers to determine that criteria and select the right residents, recognizing that housing will be specifically targeted for people from the North Shore. So what we feel is best is to be able to tap into your local service providers who have connections, who have relationships with the potential residents because they best know who those people are, their connection to the North Shore and what services should be able to follow them to come into the building. So we'll have a coordinated access table that will closely work with communities, homeless service providers in that referral and tenant selection process. We know that your local service providers are great advocates for the people that they want to come into the building. And so all of those are referred to the key access table and viewed. So some of the key partners that would be part of that selection process would be the Vancouver Coastal Health, the Ministry of Social Development and Poverty Reduction, the Canadian Mental Health Association, the Squamish Nations, Whaletooth Nation, Lookout and Luma, some of the key providers. Yeah, did you want to add anything to that?
Just basically working with community and efforts of supporting community is, is the goal in, in efforts of ensuring that those needs that are, that are most pressing on the table within a community are served, right? So, you know, that's the commitment. Thank you for summing it up.
Ms. Atfa.
Thank you. Next question. Vancouver Coastal Health made a comment, this was from yesterday, that a one dollar invest, that one dollar invested in supportive housing reaps four to five dollars benefit back to the community. Can you please elaborate on that?
Sure. Thank you. And once again, we have a slide. This one is the economics benefit page. So essentially, what this was alluding to is a study that was done titled "The Social and Economic Value of Dedicated Site Supportive Housing." And really what the economic piece here is, instead of just, it was looking at a kind of cost-benefit analysis to say, if you invest in the community this way, are there actual economic benefits to the community? And so this looked at the types of benefits and then provided kind of a costing to them. And, and these include housing stability, increasing well-being, ability to engage in employment, reduce substance use, increase safety, included construction jobs, increased local spending, stable tenancy, decreased loss of income, decreased loss of revenue due to repairs or evictions, decreased public costs due to ambulance, decreased ambulance calls, decreased hospital stays and decreased impacts on the criminal justice system, as well as decreased social services. This study is in the public hearing binder, but that is what the ratio we're speaking to.
So I'll just add to this, since I'm also the one that mentioned this during the session yesterday and speaking about complex care housing, as well as the benefits and the economic benefits of this, of supportive housing. And I just want to point out that there were five case studies of dedicated supported, dedicated site supportive housing programs that received investments from B C Housing. They were all, obviously, these are local studies, so the Budsey Building, Vancouver, Cardington Apartments, Kelowna, the Kettle on Broad in Vancouver, Queen's Matter in Victoria and Wesley Street in Nanaimo. The research shows that for every dollar invested in dedicated site-supported housing in B C, approximately four to five dollars in social and economic value is created. To summarize, these case studies illustrate the range of supported housing options across the province and the range of value created by supported housing buildings in B C, leading to a deeper appreciation of the overall social and economic value of investment for the entire community.
Thank you. Next question. How much of homelessness is due to displacement or increased rents, demeviction, et cetera? With your permission, your worship, I'd like to ask Erica Branson, the social planner for the District of North Vancouver, to answer this question.
Please.
Thank you, Tina. So I had a quick look at the two thousand twenty-three homeless count for Greater Vancouver. And the final data report had thirty-five percent of those who were homeless due to not enough income for housing, sixteen percent due to landlord or tenant conflicts, eleven percent due to unfits or unsafe housing conditions, six percent due to building had been sold or renovated, and two percent due to rent supplement expired. And when I looked specifically to the North Shore and the homeless count that was completed here in two thousand twenty-three, our highest percentage show, showed forty-four percent reported that it was because of not enough income for housing. The second was a report around some type of a conflict. So ten percent where it was a conflict with landlord or tenant, ten percent with a conflict for a parent and/or a guardian. And fifteen percent that was identified as a conflict with other. Our third was people reporting with a mental health issue had cause concern at thirteen percent. And then the last was experiencing abuse by a spouse or by a partner at ten percent. So, oh, I'm sorry. And then, so circling back to the original question, for the North Shore, it was eight percent because the building had been sold or renovated.
And if I could just add, the entire homeless count study is part of the public hearing binder materials. And the answers to this question are on pages forty-two and forty-three of that package.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of the questions and answers emailed to us?
Yes, I think that's achievable. We can, yep.
They are in a document, yes.
So we could get it emailed to us like now? Would that be?
I'm sure we can make, make that fully part of the public record. That should be no problem at all. Yeah. Ms. Atfa.
Great. Thank you. Next question. What are the security models in other communities with low barrier housing models? And I'll ask Tamsin and B C Housing to, to answer the security models in other communities for similar types of housing.
Thank you. I'm gonna answer it from my B C housing perspective. So I'm gonna start first with. So I'm going to start first with the fact that we've developed thousands of supportive housing units across the province over the last decade, and as such have had a ton of experience in learning what types of designs work and have created specific supportive housing guidelines that make recommendations as to how to meet safety and security features from a physical design perspective, both internally and externally. And so we do design according to the SEPTED principles. So that's crime prevention through environmental design. And that would include things like external lighting, fencing. It has a one-point of entry. So all people are coming into the building are coming in through one access. There's a reception at that, a staff member that would check in. Various different projects have different guest policies. We would have 24-hour staff on-site within the building. There could be external and internal cameras that are monitoring. They're monitored by the reception. So there actually, somebody is looking at the footage as it goes by. We do have outdoor amenities space for our residents to ensure that they have an opportunity to be able to enjoy the outside, perhaps walk the dog, have a smoke, to be truthful. And then from a staffing model, B C Housing doesn't tend to engage or do our nonprofits security professionals within the building. But we do want to use tenant support workers to build trust and engage residents. So what our goal here is that we have a, a, a building that is, is staffed and that, that staffer on, onsite to address issues before they become something that's a security. There are very few occasions that once a building is originally tenanted at, at the initial stages that we do offer additional support for people who are moving in for their first time living in this community and this environment to just have a little bit of extra support on, on, onsite while, while that transition is being made.
Okay. Ms. Atta?
Thank you so much. The next question. Can the RCMP advise as to the house issue at Mountain Highway in Keith? I'll note that the RCMP have said they have no more comment at this time, and this house issue is not related to the land use for this site, which is the subject of tonight's public hearing.
Next question, please.
The next question. Thank you. And thank you, your worship, with, with your flexibility for the way we're, I've been trying to gather the questions over last night and tonight and, and have answers ready for you and everybody. Next question. Will there be a variety of residents screened for this project as opposed to the perception that there will be, that this will be housing only for males? There were two questions, I understand, that wish to be withdrawn from one of the councillors. Okay. Well, thank you so much. I will go back to that question and thank you. This question then will come back to the one I started. Please clarify exactly what the injection site will be and who will be allowed to, and who will be allowed to use it and why is it necessary? So I'll ask VCH to start to answer this one, please, with your worship's permission.
Please.
So this housing project, this is a housing project and does not include services for the public. Typically, the term safe injection site refers to a public clinic, and this will not be part of this project. To be very, very clear, the building and the services it provides are only available to residents of that building. As part of a harm reduction practice that has proven to help save lives, there will be a space that has staff oversight where residents can use drugs more safely. The space is called an overdose prevention site. The purpose of this overdose prevention site or OPS is to support the safety of residents who have a relationship with substances. This is more about saving lives given the current opiate crisis, to prevent death and to also connect people to care and be around other people when they are using substances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Will there be a variety of residents screened for this project as opposed to the perception that this will be housing only for males? Tamsin, please.
Thank you. This facility is for all genders. And the idea is that we will aim to mirror the demographic as reported in the 2023 homeless count. So not just for men, but for, will be a percentage by gender, age, including seniors and members of the indigenous community as well. Anything you wanted to add or?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that there were a couple of comments earlier this evening around the mixing of genders and how women might not feel safe and supportive housing. And so I just wanted to say that the district and all of their foresight do, did actually approve a supportive housing project for women and women-led families on Lloyd Avenue. And so for women who do want to live amongst only women buildings, there will be an opportunity for them. But what we do find actually at B C Housing is that those buildings are harder to tenant and that there are many women that do want to come in with their friends or partners and live in supportive housing. And so often have a mixed gender building is actually preferred for a lot of people who are in need of housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another question related to the Community Advisory Committee, which was addressed a little bit earlier, but this is related. Will Vancouver Coastal Health be part of any community advisory committee?
So I'll go back to what Kevin had mentioned. If, if an advisory committee is used, Vancouver Coastal Health will be a part of that community advisory. There will be a member of that advisory and be available to answer questions and provide support through that community advisory committee.
Thank you. The next question relates to the assessed value, which was answered earlier. Next question then. Tell me if I'm getting mixed up. I think I'm on track, but there were a lot of questions. Thank you. This question mentioned was made of a B C Hydro right-of-way behind the site. I know we touched on this on the parking point, on the parking question earlier. Are there plans to eventually open this right-of-way to provide access?
Yes, as mentioned, that's the road allowance at the rear of the site.
Thank you. Next question. Will all resident, will all the residents at the Travelodge be moved to the Keith Road project? B C Housing, please.
Thanks for that question. I think that I went through in some detail about how the coordinated access and assessment table would work for this project. And so that would be implemented at East Keith Road. There may be some overlap with current existing residents at the Travelodge who would meet those eligibility criterias. But it's not necessarily picking up one building and moving it into another. I think it's also important to acknowledge that it hinges on timing. So B C Housing currently leases the Travelodge and that lease is up for expiry before the East Keith Road would be completed if approved. So we are looking for an alternate location for those folks anyways. And so given that it's a three-year horizon, there's the likelihood that we would be making referrals to other housing. We do know that two residents have already moved from the Travelodge site once the supportive housing facility opened by the Squamish Nation was, on Capilano Road was put into place. And we know that there are eight others that are on the waitlist from the Travelodge to move into that. So we do know there is some flexibility and movement at the Travelodge. We have seen people moving on and we are no longer taking in new residents at that location to allow and help us and support our future lease expiry challenges.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Is zero-tolerant substance use an option for Keith Road? For Vancouver Coastal Health and B C Housing, please.
Thanks for that question. So I think this one came out of a conversation where, and it was repeated in the statistics earlier that a lack of income is a primary driver for homelessness. And so the concept of having available spaces and units for folks whose income is their barrier to housing be an important aspect of this project. So I wanted to take two, two pieces here is that the Community Housing Fund, which is the program that B C Housing, it's the largest program we have. It's to achieve almost 25,000 units in the province over the la, the next 10 years. We have two projects here in the District of North Vancouver, one that's just wrapping up construction and one that's just started, Oxford and Delbrook lands projects. Those are a mixed income approach. So 20% of those units on each of those buildings is actually reserved for deep subsidy, and those are across all unit types. So it would go all the way up to, from a single unit, all the way through to the family unit. And those units are the ones that are intended for people who are on a fixed income or potentially a family that might be on social assistance, that income is their barrier and they may not have other challenges. Supportive housing is specifically for people who need help and support services to maintain their residencies. And so these are the folks that have other challenges, have other reasons that they may have ended up homeless or homeless at risk. So we want to be clear that that supportive housing is for people who need those additional supports. And, and we do understand that there is a need for people who do use substances to have those additional supports to maintain their, to maintain their tendencies. I think it's 32% of those respondents in the point-in-time count that the social planner was referring earlier to this evening did indicate that substance use was issue that they did have. They didn't necessarily say it was the reason for their homelessness, but they did suggest that they did have it. And so that's a significant portion of those people that wouldn't be housed in this facility. And so for that reason, B C Housing is not supportive of applying an abstinence-based model.
I'll add to that from a healthcare lens. So this initiative does not have the option for an abstinence-based service only. I'd like to add that supporting people wherever they are at in their substance use journey is important. So this includes those people who are abstinence-based or who are using substances. This is very important for several reasons. One, it's about managing overdoses and preventing death. Two is linking people who use substances to health and social support. And three is connection to people to prevent from using alone. If people are not supported to use substances in a safe way, they will use in public. They will use in an unsafe space and they will use alone. So this is why this initiative is supporting people wherever they are at in their substance use journey, including those who are abstinent and those who are not.
Thank you. Next question. Can the partners comment on security? And what plan will be put in place to deal with issues that arise in the facility? And I'll ask Kevin, please, from Luma, and if any other partner wishes to add to that.
For sure. Thank you. So ultimately, we deal with situations as they present based on their own individual, unique needs, calling in appropriate authorities when and where needed, appropriate community resources as, as needed, whether that be extraordinary support from Vancouver Coastal Health, extraordinary, extraordinary support from the, the local RCMP, or extraordinary support from the hospital. We endeavor to respond to emergencies as they present in appropriate, according manners, coupled with staff and staff training. So we endeavor our staff with a lot of training in efforts of avoiding certain, certain potential situations that may make their way from the building to the community. Trainings including occupational, occupational first aid, Level One Crisis Intervention Skills Training, Conflict Resolution and De-escalation Training, cultural supporting through an indigenous lens training, cultural training, LGB, LGBTQ2+ Training, Harm Reduction Training, including the Lot Zone Training, Mental Health, Mental Health First Aid Training, Safe Talk, which is a frontline training on dealing with those having suicidal thoughts, and assist training, which is the leadership training associated with the Safe Talk in efforts of supporting those having suicidal thoughts. Our, our goal is to support those we serve to the best of our abilities through a very well-rounded training base to all, to all those tenant support workers and all those support workers that work onsite in efforts of minimizing situations that, that, that may potentially pop up, pop outside of the building. If they do pop outside the building, we are readily available to call in the appropriate resources to lean on the community as, when and as needed, with the goal that, you know, everything that we're providing should minimize that, you know, minimize that in, in the support sense. Sorry, I'm rambling. I'm going to shut up now.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Next question. Can staff please describe the process by which this site was selected? And with your permission, I'll ask Dan Milburn, General Manager of Planning, Permits and Properties, to respond.
Thank you very much. Good evening, your worship, members of council, members of the public. Site selection is a long process. It's initiated by council through the identification of need. Council, in its approval of its official community plan in 2011 and the subsequent review of the action plan in 2021, identified and encouraged non-support, pardon me, nonprofit supportive housing groups, developers, senior levels of government, and others to develop and facilitate the development of supportive housing for those with mental health and addiction issues, and to consider the use of district land where appropriate to contribute towards the leverage other funding for the development of social and affordable housing. This was further supported by council's efforts in 2016 with the Rental and Affordable Housing Strategy and was also supported by a community-led effort and a committee of council, public members committee, the Rental Affordable Housing Task Force that provided advice to council to create this form of housing. This then led to a council-directed conversation around a review of the inventory of district lands. And I can draw the public's attention to a February 26, 2019 workshop where this property, as well as all potential available properties, district-owned at the time, were identified for potential development. We then cross-referenced that list of available district lands with criteria, criteria such as lands that are currently designated for residential use, lands that are in-town centers or along corridors, lands that have access to amenities and transportation. Then with council's direction, we consulted with nonprofit housing partners, including B C Housing, and have negotiated memorands of, of understanding as well as committed to working with other partners. In this particular case with this property, we had a lengthy conversation with B C Housing around potential sites, looking towards council's inventory. And this site was selected in partnership and consultation with B C Housing and with council's direction. Due diligence was undertaken by B C Housing, and earlier this year, B C Housing identified the opportunity for capital funding to develop this property, subject to a public process and subject to council's decision with respect to this resoning bylaw. That information was then communicated to council and direction was provided to bring this forward as a bylaw consideration, which has led to tonight's process. That's a high-level overview of the site selection process. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Next question. I think we are approximately halfway through the questions. Could we try a new approach and restrict substances from the facility while also providing detox and counselling? And I'll direct that to Vancouver Coastal Health and B C Housing, please. Parts of this, I think, were addressed, but if we could please summarize again.
Yeah. So we have addressed some of this, but I'll just address the detox question specifically. So detox is an important part of the health continuum and will be offered to residents. Referral to detox will be offered to residents who want to take that step. Detox is not for all people and not all people want to enter detox. So for this facility, to be clear, referrals to healthcare services such as detox will occur if people want to take that step in their journey. And additionally, already in the building, substance use counselling will be made, made available for all residents.
And B C Housing, additional comments? Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. A related question. Could staff please provide the criteria for selecting a supportive housing site? I'll make a few comments, and if other staff wish to add to that. As was described in the presentation yesterday, one of the goals of supportive housing is to provide services and housing where people are. That phrase, where they are at. We are, know it's important that there are services nearby. And, and this may be grocery stores, other community services, rec center, transit. We also know that it's important for potential future residents to feel part of the community. And as was noted during the identification of district-owned sites, residential-owned sites available for development were very important.
Mr. Milburn?
Just to add to that, your worship, council through its approval of a housing needs report in 2021 identified the need for approximately 200 supportive housing units, so additional units in the community. That was further bolstered by council's update to the housing needs report in July of this year. And that has also been supported by the assessment completed by the province under the Housing Supply Act and the Housing Target Order with guidance provided to council in October of this year, all of which has indicated that there is a critical need for supportive housing in the community in order to meet existing demands. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Next question. I'll start answering this and then, and ask if B C Housing wishes to add anything. Could staff please comment on the proposed size and the number of units compared to other supporting, supportive housing projects? I do know from other projects from, that our partners have discussed that there are, this is about an average-sized project compared to similar projects in Vancouver, Burnaby, Chilliwack, Abbotsford and Hope, I believe. For one of our own sites on West 16th, 60 units of supportive housing for women and women-led families. For one of our own sites on West Sixteenth, sixty units of supportive housing for women and women led families. The lot size could be slightly bigger. I'm not a hundred percent sure at this moment, but roughly the same number of units, sixty supportive housing units that we hope to be under construction in the near future. Next question. Let me just scroll down so I make sure that I describe it rather than my scribble writing. Next question. Is there any data anywhere suggesting that property values decline by constructing a supportive housing project? This was answered during some of the earlier presentations and comments. I wonder if there are any further questions from the data holders, Vancouver Coastal Health, for example.
There's lots of studies that speak to property values either holding or increasing, but we haven't found any studies that speak to them decreasing.
Thank you. This question, I think we have covered. Please explain circumstances of why Travelodge was set up and how it compares with features of twelve hundred East Keith. We've heard that Travelodge was set up in in response to the COVID pandemic and the need to provide separate safe rooms for people and that it has evolved a little bit into a supportive housing. But we've also heard some of the differences from a older motel being used for emergency supportive housing compared to a purpose led building designed for safe access and individual self-contained units for residents. Next question. Is a criminal record check ever part of this kind of housing? Will residents with serious criminal backgrounds be admitted to this housing? Will residents with significant mental health conditions be admitted to this housing? And I'd like to turn that to Tamsin, please, and Kevin, thank you.
No worries. Thank you. So it's permanent housing, which is legislated through the Residential Tenancy Act with the rights and responsibilities afforded as any other private renter in British Columbia. Subsequently, no criminal record checks on on housing. Is the sort it was, it's no. No, no criminal records checks to access housing. Simply, sorry, Megan, you're up.
So I'll just, I'm just gonna address them at the question about will people with mental health concerns be supported at this initiative? I just want to say very importantly that people with a variety of mental health issues will be served through this initiative. And they will be provided support so that they can get better. They can have improved healthcare and they can receive the supports they need. There are a wide variety of residents currently on the North Shore who have serious mental health concerns. And some of these individuals, provided they want to engage in the services we provide, so I'll just repeat that. Provided that they want to engage in the services that we provide would be eligible to receive to reside here in this supported housing building.
Thank you. The next question for Tamsin. How have the Squamish Nation and the Slaywithuth Nation been engaged on this proposal?
Thank you. Yes, as part of this application process, we did refer to both nations. The Squamish have provided a letter of support, which is tab number twenty in the public hearing binder from Joe Kwan, Senior Manager for Member Services. In addition to that, and perhaps I'm not sure if Naomi would like to add, but BC Housing also has a First Nations consultant working with the design team.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is the percentage of residents who will pay rent geared to income? And I think this goes to BC Housing.
Yeah, thanks very much for the question. We do have on the slides that this is either the shelter portion of income assistance or it's rent geared to income. So it really does depend on who applies to the building and who is accepted. The large majority of people will be on either income assistance or persons with disabilities. And there is also an allowable income under those streams, so they can actually have a little bit of income even and still still maintain their income assistance. So it is a very small portion of people that will be on rent geared to income in the building.
Thank you. Next question. What type of connection to the North Shore would be required for someone to live in this housing? I think some some of this has been referenced, but I'll ask BC Housing, Vancouver Coastal Health and or Luma to to provide any other comments.
Yeah, thanks. So again, it's through that coordinated access team with the community partners. So they're going to be the ones who are already providing services to those who are without homes and they're going to be able to support BC Housing in that referral process to be able to identify what those community connections are. The services that use such as a shelter, a connection to a VCH health service, any kind of North Vancouver outreach services, or perhaps the location of the camp that they're sleeping in. So we are going to rely on that referral process to understand how they belong and where they've been and how long they've been on the North Shore.
Thank you. Next question.
Apologies, I just want to add one point to that, to just importantly state on the record that the five complex care housing clients will be residents of the North Shore. So in order to qualify for and be eligible for complex care housing in the building, they are must be residents of the North Shore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question now. This is another question related to data. Is there any current data that can confirm criminal statistics near supportive housing projects and vicinity? We have touched on this, but reading this into the record and and looking for any additional context, please.
Yeah, well, the last study that was referenced was around the police calls and it was referenced in the presentation and it is an old study. It's twenty fourteen. And so that was a study of five separate supportive housing projects. Ran them over a few year period to see what the statistics came out. They're around the same size as this building. They're across the province. And so we haven't updated the study since twenty fourteen, to be honest, but what we rely on now is typically the RCMP liaison on a point by point basis for to be able to learn. And so we have data that usually is around police calls. And then you try to be able to correlate it to the crime stats. So they're not quite the same, right? The police call versus a crime stat don't always, you can't always see the correlation. You can't always see the link because of the privacy that's called in it. And so I would say the worst thing that we find is that that there could be an increase in police calls when supportive housing comes into a community and it's typically because it there's a reason to call and there's something to call about. And so that that sometimes that supportive housing becomes a bit of a lightning rod within a community. But what we see is that if there is a spike, that it typically goes down within the first six months of operations. That's not all housing developments. I'm just, there's pretty prolific information out there on the internet about one particularly project in Vancouver. So I don't want to, I don't want to lie and say that it hasn't happened, but what we tend to see is a spike of calls coming in and then they tailor off.
Thank you. Couple of questions again related to Travelodge. Please elaborate on the Travelodge situation and the differences between the supportive housing projects in Vancouver, Burnaby, et cetera, and why comparing them is difficult. Again, BC Housing, please.
Okay, I think I've elaborated on the Travelodge situation previously and how they differentiate between supportive housing projects. So I'm not, I'm not sure what I haven't answered in this. But I can let you know that Burnaby specifically has two separate supportive housing projects on one site for a total of ninety five units. So it would be larger than the sixty five units that are here. It's all they're also, they're both modular, so a little less flexible in terms of the purpose built project that we're building, that we're proposing to build here. So so the Travelodge and other hotels that we rented during the pandemic would have that same challenge around not being purpose built versus the ones that we're building now. We're replacing any of those hotels that have been in both Vancouver and across the province with purpose built supportive housing.
Thank you. Next question. Please clarify the deaths at the Travelodge. Kevin, please.
Yeah, for sure. So first off, the Travelodge largely largely serves an elderly demographic of folks and largely indigenous. So to date, there's been eight deaths at the Travelodge, two assumed from overdose, five assumed from natural causes and one accidental death, death, an individual got hit by a bus just outside of the the transitional site or the transitional program.
Thank you. Next question. Why was the complex care part of the project left out of staff's presentation? I'll turn that to Tamsin.
Sure, thank you. The focus of the presentation was on the land use bylaw, which is about the sixty five units in total. But we did discuss the Vancouver Coastal Health complex care units as slides twenty nine and thirty.
Thank you.
I think it probably would be fair. I think the purpose of the question was to maybe better understand the difference between the two models that are going to be within the facility. So you have sixty units, which Naomi is the representative for the sixty units and we have five units and Megan's representative for the five units. So I just to describe the difference between them.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to complex care housing here. So complex care housing provides a level of service that is currently not available in supportive housing. So it's a service that goes beyond what is currently available. Complex care housing is a wraparound health supports in in the building, four or five people in the building. So it's added layer of health support. So just to repeat, it goes beyond the level of care that is currently supported in supportive housing. We have various operational initiatives in our Vancouver Coastal Health region. There's actually eight. And again, I mentioned this yesterday, they're in rural, remote and urban areas of Vancouver Coastal Health Region. Some have been in operation for two years and they're showing great success. We are also part of a provincial initiative where there's over thirty complex care housing initiatives in the province, either underway in development or already operational. We do anticipate that these will, that the initiative on the North Shore will build on the success of other initiatives. In addition to that, there will be very strong outcome measurements done. Those studies, those measurements have already begun.
I'd also clarify that one of the benefits that we have in the early identification of this site as a potential for complex care is the ability to design for complex care being within the building. So it was a a really great partnership upfront to identify that the North Shore is in need of complex care and to be able to build it into a supportive housing project, be able to design it specifically to accommodate that population and the clinical services that would be attached to it. And then also available ourselves of an operator who is operating complex care in Vancouver. So it was a really good, perfect storm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have a few remaining questions. In the ministry information, the complex care is for people at risk of mental health addiction. Can we assume that the complex care of five beds will be the limit? And that the remaining beds will be for non-addicted individuals? BC Housing and Vancouver Coastal Health, please.
Please repeat that question.
Right. In the in the ministry information, the complex care is for people at risk with mental health addiction. Can we assume that the complex care of five beds will be the limit? And the remaining beds will be for non-addicted individuals? Question relates to the sixty units of supportive housing, which will be for a range of individuals who are homeless at risk of homeless and and some of those may be people with addiction. Is there anything further to add to the to that?
That that's accurate, Tina. So the sixty units, people could still have substance use challenges. The five units go above and beyond with additional support services were for people who need that additional support.
Thank you. I believe I'm going to the last question, your worship. What is the
I see two more questions, but okay. Oh, sorry, maybe I've missed that. Sorry. What the question I see still is, what is the provincial government's long term plan to deal with the opioid crisis?
Yes.
And mental health and addiction?
Yes, and thank you. I see the the new last question. Yes, that's the question I was heading to. What is the provincial government's long term plan to deal with the opioid crisis, mental health and addiction? And I will turn that first to VCH, please.
So I can speak specifically to the Vancouver Coastal Health Plan as it relates to funding from the Ministry of Mental Health and Addiction. So there's a robust plan in place to support people around opiate use and also to address the toxic drug crisis. As far as it goes for planning specifically and answering a question specific to the provincial government, that is a question answer that we can provide further detail to you, but from a Vancouver Coastal Health perspective, we are committed to providing care to people who are experiencing substance use concerns and who are greatly affected by the opiate crisis and the toxic drug supply.
Thank you. I believe I'm at the last question. If I have missed any, please let me know. This question is, has the RCMP been consulted on this project? And I'll turn that to Tamsin, please.
Sure, thank you. So there are two aspects to this. Yes, and the first answer is yes. And you may have noticed Staff Sergeant Philip Young in the order or at the desk yet yesterday, last night. And he was here because he has been working with us on this and as have other members of the RCMP detachment. They know of this project. They're working with us. And we hope to continue that work as if this project goes forward, as we do the detailed design, as we work on building those continued relationships and and ultimately operating the facility. One of the key steps at the detailed design stage is reviewed by both our designer design panel and Staff Sergeant Kevin Bracewell, who's on our panel and looks at crime prevention through environmental design. So that's part of any process, but of course, on a project like this, that is of interest to the first responders because it has that ability to reduce their efforts because it's so much easier to help people who are in a building. They are very interested in this project and are involved.
Mr. Milburn, additional comments? Your worship, just to note, the RCMP is a neutral body. And they do not provide endorsement or not of any particular project. But of course, they will respond to community needs and adapt to changing concerns. And that involves in in consultation with community partners, providing strategic advice in law enforcement where necessary. And they are certainly aware of this project and we've been engaging them. Thank you, worship. Okay, thank you very much. So our intended end time for tonight is ten thirty. So I can take one more first time speaker tonight and then we'll carry on with the reconvened meeting. Is is there one more first time speaker? Okay, that's fine. We can, yes, please. Welcome. Have a have a seat, get comfortable. And when you're ready, you'll have five minutes to address the the hearing.
My name is Jennifer McCollough. I'm a mother and a parent and a grandparent and a great grandparent and I've worked for twenty five years in the social services. Well, thirty five years and I've worked on the North Shore for most of those years in various capacities and I'm I'm in favor of this. It breaks my heart when I see people on the streets sleeping without any place to live. And I think that a sign of a society is how well it's being, it takes care of the people on the outskirts. And I'm, I think it sounds wonderful, your presentation and how comprehensive and robust your plan is. And I'm really impressed with how well you've answered all the questions. I'm just going to briefly speak, say, share a story that happened couple of weekends ago with my son and I might, I have a teenager and a thirty something and we were down by Savon and I was just going to purchase something down at Pemberton and Marine. And there was, it was, I thought it was still open from ten to eleven and my son was in the car with two hamburgers and we pulled up and it was closed and there was a man just setting up for the night with his umbrella and his cart and sort of fifty, sixty. So I said to my son, would you like to give your hamburgers to him? And he said, yeah. So we pulled around and he and we offered it to him and we rolled out in his window and he said, ah, sure, I'm just setting up for the night. And I asked his name and I can remember his name. I won't say it now because I don't want to break his anonymity, but he had been in prison for thirty eight years. And it broke my heart. And he said, I've lived on the streets for three years. And I love it here. And I said, well, I hope one day you have a nice little place, a warm place where you can go. And he said, and I mentioned the Alano Club where there's clean and sober. He said, I know Tommy down there. And I prayed as I left that maybe he'd go down there and get a cup of coffee, maybe reconnect with sobriety if that be his path. But my son said, I wonder why he went to prison. And I said, it's none of our business there, but for the grace of God, go your way. It could just be him making a bad decision. making a bad decision, coming home from a party one night, hitting somebody manslaughter, involuntary manslaughter, you know? And that's all I really want to say. I'm one hundred percent in favor of this. I feel like it's a health issue, late stage addiction is palliative care, I've heard. And there's a robust recovery community on the North Shore. It's wonderful. There's tons of centers where people are getting well when they want to, when they're ready. It sounds wonderful that you'll help people get into detox. We need more detoxes. We need to support people. I've worked with, there's such a paucity of affordable housing. You know, it's so easy to end up there with one or two strikes against me. I that could be me. And I just think you're wonderful what you're doing and I commend you. And I really hope that this occurs and I thank you so much for listening to me. And I love North Van. I think it's a great place to be, a great place to work. And we're very blessed to be here and privileged. And something like this is just remarkable. I really hope it goes through. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your comments, Jennifer McCullough. I just watching the time. So we have a come on up. We have to have a motion to extend the meeting beyond ten thirty.
Hi, my name is Bill Dwelling. I've been to most, I came to both meetings last night and tonight. I didn't come to either oppose or support the the facility. I came to to find out. I came to be reassured that when it goes forward that it'll be okay. It'll be okay for for myself and my family living in the neighborhood. I think almost everyone here supports the idea of supporting people in need. And for myself, listening to what everyone has said, you know, I was very happy to hear what you guys had to say tonight because I was very curious about who is going to be living here? Is it going to be people who have suffered from economic misfortune? Is it going to be people who suffer from the misfortune of mental illness? Mental illness isn't a matter of choice. People don't have, they don't decide to have mental illness. They don't decide to become drug addicts. It's, they're all different kinds of misfortunes that we can all fall to. My family has been very heavily affected by mental illness. So I was very curious about what the makeup of people at this facility is is going to be. There's been a lot of talk about human compassion and caring and what do we do for the marginalized people in our society? And I think it's very important that we support the marginalized people in our society. I don't want to live in a society where I see people unconscious on on the sidewalk. I, you know, I think we all move up together. But this evening, listening to your answers about the facility and the reality of it, it doesn't sound like this facility is designed for the victims of economic misfortune. It sounds like it's designed for people with mental disorders and substance abuse problems. And I am, I don't mean to vilify those people. I really don't. I want those people to get all the the support that they they need with the understanding that they have complex problems. Like you guys have continued to say, people that choose to participate in our programs because you can't force these people, right? They're they're going to be the people that they're going to be. So it really sounds like the facility that you are proposing is a facility primarily for people with mental health issues and drug abuse problems. There may be a few people in there who they lost their job and they've been living in their car. There may be a few people in there, but it doesn't sound like that's going to be the majority. I think that absolutely we need to support people with drug abuse problems, substance abuse problems, mental health issues. I just don't think that that building on that corner that's across the street from a brand new park and half a dozen daycare centers, that's the place for a mental health facility.
Pause your comments there and and we'll come right back to you. Counsel, I need to move a motion to extend the meeting beyond ten thirty, not to exceed eleven o'clock. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Counsel Ma, call the question on that. All in favor? Contrary minded? Motion is carried. Please continue and don't worry. You'll be able to go your full time. Don't worry about it. That's just a technical thing we had to do.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Ma. So, yeah. So, yeah, I am in for very much in favor. I think like everyone here who is opposed to this project, I am in favor of supporting people in need one hundred percent. But after listening and I came in, I won't say with an open mind, but like I said, I came in hoping to be reassured that this project was going to be okay. But after listening to your answers, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I don't think that this project, like I said, I I don't think that the corner of Keith and Mountain Highway is the proper location for a mental health facility. I just don't. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for letting me speak, you know, at the very end of things. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Bill, for your comments. Okay, counsel, I have a motion at this time and that is the public hearing will be be adjourned and reconvened on Thursday, December seventh, twenty twenty three at seven PM. Seconded, we'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor, contrary mind, motion carried. So just for the public sake, what that means is that the hearing is still open. That means that council can still receive information. People can still talk about the matter around council table back and forth with staff. And what we intend to do is on October seventh, we'll, sorry, December seventh, December seventh, twenty twenty three, we'll be coming back to the same spot at seven o'clock to continue on with the third night. At that time, we're hoping that people will be able to speak first. The first priority will be given to people who speak a first time. And then we'll go to people speaking a first or second time and then we'll we'll move towards exhausting the speakers list at that point. But I wish everybody a great evening.
I seconded, so I just have a question. Is there a way for the community to, I seconded in the motion, can I not speak to it?
We already voted on the motion.
Okay, can I ask a question? Sorry. It's it's late. I just wanted to ask a question that's still open for the public to communicate with us.
Yes.
Is there an ability for the community, the community to communicate with BC Housing and Vancouver Coastal Health and Luma? There's ways for them to get in touch with representatives and our staff. Okay.
That's all still open. Now, once we go through and we exhaust the speakers list and close the matter formally.
No.
Then no. But at this point, all still open. Everybody have a great evening. Good night.